Welcome, everybody, to the Shelburne Planning Commission on Thursday, June 28. I call it to order. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I have a motion to approve.
So, second?
All right, moved by Stephen, seconded by Dick. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of the agenda as planned?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Next up is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting on June 14. Motion to approve the minutes.
So, move.
Moved by Dick, seconded by Stephen. All right. Any discussion? I actually didn't have any. Yeah, all of my notes were just notes to myself.
Yeah, mine too.
As I'm scanning. All right. So, notes look good. Actually, one comment on the, just page two, and I don't know that we need to go to it. It just says, "Kate Lally suggested adding ortho photos showing the change over time on Route 7." Is, I don't want to sound ignorant, but is ortho just the original photo, like, historical?
Ortho photography is the type of photography that's taken that corrects for the surface of the earth. So, that's just the term that geeks use for what most people call aerial photographs.
Perfect. All right.
It's corrected.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Perfect.
Measurable.
I figured that that made sense to whoever it would make sense to. Cool. All right, well, if no-
Do you want to change that to aerial? No?
No, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. There isn't any other discussion, all in favor of approving the minutes as stated?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Next up, do we have any disclosures around any potential conflicts of interest? Seeing none?
We have a conflict at working past 8:30.
Me, too.
Right. Well, this could be really fast with no Kate, and if we don't have anybody from Snork. Okay, so, open to the public? I'm going to assume there's no comments from the public tonight. So, the first discussion item around the comprehensive plan is to wrap up future land use. We did go through the first section in a fair amount of detail last time. So-
What page should we get to?
That's a good question. I don't know where I drew the line. It was page 15, I think?
Yeah, that sounds right.
What's that? Yeah, I have an official squiggly line. And I think it was on new item number five, recommended action, the work with Shelburne Museum.
Could we step back one?
Sure.
You want to step back to what?
Page 15, number nine.
And we're using the pages that are in the printed version, right? That kind of-
That's what I'm looking at here.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure.
Number nine says, "Shall be reinforced as compact." And I was wondering if we could just use "maintained." I don't know if it's a huge difference, but it just seemed reinforced as a-
Didn't we have this conversation last time?
No, I'm just, we were talking about the whole thing. I was just talking about this one word.
So, you want to say "maintained" as?
I think "maintained" as a compact mixed-use neighborhood.
Wait, so you're on-
As opposed to, what are we reinforcing?
Number nine.
Number nine on the-
So involved.
Nine, on page 15.
Yeah, I was keeping my comments from last time.
Just-
Gotcha.
Maybe it's just me. I don't know.
So, it's using where?
It says, "Shelburne Falls area distinct historic area shall be reinforced as a compact mixed-use neighborhood." I don't know why we need to use reinforced, how that word, if we maintain it as a compact mixed-use neighborhood. That makes sense to me.
Yeah, no argument here.
Is that a, that's a, yes?
Yeah, are we all okay with maintained?
There's one.
Maintained?
I don't have any.
Okay, so, where-
So, one of the things that should be mentioned just briefly is that the Natural Resources Committee, at least Gail Albert, and I'm not sure if also Susan Meganberg, had taken a stab at making edits, or at least they gave me the understanding that they were going to. So, I just wanted to mention that there may be some things that were put in as a result of their comments. And I'm thinking-
In this section.
Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure that none of them were put in, in the material that has been reviewed so far, and I don't believe any of it was. But, that was just a mention. Oh, there's, speaking of the Natural Resources Committee, I was just saying that you had contacted me at the time the packets were being put together about having the opportunity to comment on the live document, and I had sent you the link, and so-
And I did.
We were just making sure that your comments had not shown up in the sections that they've already been through.
I only started after, because I was at the last meeting.
Yep.
But Don may have put some.
Yeah, I didn't see anything with his, his name on it. Doesn't mean that it's not there, but I didn't see it.
I should have printed that instead of, I didn't get a chance to get on. Three, continue.
Yeah, it's all pretty much the same as- So, do we-
Okay, so, we've gone through 15. That was Dick's. Did this comment, Jason, you'd like to understand the intent? Did that get?
Which one does that go to?
What is it saying?
So, you'd highlighted the two bullets, improvement of accessibility, false road, and redesign an upper false road.
Yeah, exactly. I think I was assuming that the, yeah, these are, these have probably been in the plan for quite some time, right?
Yep.
These aren't new notes. So, just curious if there's, given the things that have been done, I mean, there's now crosswalks and-
There's parking on the-
Yeah.
Yeah, one of the issues is the lack of the consistent sidewalk in the area near the Shelburne Country Store. And so, there was, there has been a plan developed for putting new sidewalk along that side, but it hasn't been implemented. So, that first bullet point really hasn't been addressed, and-
Where would the sidewalk go? Would it be in front of the store?
Well, that's one of the plans.
Because I remember when we had a discussion a couple of years ago, the owner came out and was-
He got kind of bogged down in the issue of parking.
Right, and the cars are going to be on the sidewalk. So, it's going to be really-
That, yeah, I was thinking about that when I drove through there the other day, and-
And you can't put the sidewalk behind the cars.
Right.
Which wouldn't make sense.
And I know it's inconvenient for pedestrians, but currently you can physically get around there through the other side and crosswalks. To make that better, though, I mean, having this in here as a recommended action, I don't have a problem with. I think, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't leaving in stuff from a legacy plan where-
That had already been done.
Things had been addressed.
Yeah.
But that makes sense.
I think that's not the case.
Right.
Does that, does, do either of those bullet points talk about, specifically about improving that-
Not that-
From the, from the-
In front of the country store?
The flying pig, bearded frog across the front of the country store, because that's all not connected.
Well, this is, it's referring to the area on Falls Road, starting at the Route 7 intersection to the entrance to the shopping park.
Got it, okay.
That takes that in.
Yeah.
But that's the only missing link, is basically from the country store to Route 7. There is sidewalk-
Right, because there's sidewalks.
The rest of the way.
No, well, there's not, to the bearded frog, there's not.
Also, I'm saying, from the country store to Route 7 is a missing link, but to the shopping plaza, it works.
Right, yeah. So, as long as that's covered, I think that should be in there.
I mean, the country store has that little lot back behind them. I guess they just don't want, I mean-
People won't go behind it.
Some people do park there.
Right. But I mean, I think if you put a sidewalk in there and just had better signage around parking back here, you know, it seems like it would improve things, because you've got all these cars parked right in front of the building, kind of blocking the view of the building. You miss this sort of cool historic facade, but-
Yeah, and I think for the purpose of this discussion, this is just, this is a recommended action for one. So, it's something to look into that would then balloon into a lot of discussion around specifics.
Right, because we're not going to solve it right now.
Right, right.
And that's not the mandate here.
I mean, I walked it last week with my little K-3 lacrosse camp. We walked from the fieldhouse up, crossed the street there, walked along that stretch. You know, it's not completely unsafe.
It's totally doable, but-
There's kind of a little gravel path, and you can just stick this out of the road. But it definitely feels like, wait, why isn't it, it feels missing.
Yeah, and that's the center of the village.
Yeah.
So, we've gotten through the recommended actions.
Yep.
I just had, so, we're talking about the growth area beyond the village.
Right.
So, that's page 19.
So, that's page 19. And I, I just had, well, in this, we want to continue with what we were doing last time, where if somebody has a comment to call out, just call it out, and if somebody has something previous, we'll stop there first. And to kick it off, I just, for goals for this area, I don't think we need for this area. This is also stuff that I suppose could get cleaned up in editing, but trying to lighten that load.
Yeah.
And then, in the second sentence, "as noted above," I don't think is needed.
As noted above, three words.
Yeah.
Just to remove those.
Any other comments on that?
How about getting rid of the word "also"? Did somebody underline it?
Take out the space.
There you go.
So, instead of saying it also will be characterized, should it just say it will be characterized by development patterns?
Yeah, so, remove "also" on that.
You want to get rid of this "also"?
Yep.
Or it will, just "also."
Okay. Yeah, and then, kind of takes me to objective-
I had something up there.
Five.
You had a comment, add to gather and-
Two, two.
Oh, yeah, right.
Sure. Yeah, I'm okay to accept if there's any.
What does it say?
Just as neighborhoods develop in this area, housing should be cited to reserve spaces for neighborhood residents and children to gather and play.
Yep.
Okay.
Great.
Yes, I think that's good. And my next comment was on objective five, unless there's something sooner.
Number five? Wait, sorry. Where, which five?
Objective number five.
Yeah, objective number five.
Objective five, so we've jumped, okay.
Jumped.
Okay, so-
Ooh, that jumps quite a bit. I just got all gunked up.
I wondered on 4.5, if we reduce three acres to two acres, if that would encourage a little bit more using the new zoning.
Where?
On 4.5.
It's now, it's the new five, on page 22. Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Was that five?
Yep, I think it's, yeah.
I was wondering if changing three acres to two would help encourage people to use the form-based zoning. That is a question, Donna.
That seems to me like it would be, it would encourage at least another look at it. I don't know from a zoning standpoint if that's what that impact would really have on, on number five.
Yeah. Well, I'm not sure that that, that's not going to necessarily, if you changed three to two by itself, changing, treating them as planned developments, you're thinking that might create an incentive for people to use form-based zoning?
Yeah, it's a question.
I guess maybe a little bit, but I, and you'd have to change, so it would no longer be continue, it would be to revise the regulations so that parcels of two or more are treated as planned developments.
Consider changing.
So, but form-based zoning would apply to the Route 7 corridor, right?
It does.
So, are there lots of-
Right now, it's not being widely accepted.
It's not, I'm just wondering if there are, I mean, are there large plots where that would, that we're thinking?
So, I mean, there are-
You could put a couple of lots together and end up with something like that.
Yeah, I guess the question I've got for you, Dick, is that you're looking for language that would encourage people to, to use form-based zoning?
Right.
I mean, if that's the case, then why not suggest language that does this? I'm not sure that by changing it from three to two, that that's going to necessarily mean that someone's going to say, oh, well, gee, I, I really don't want to do a PUD, I'll do form-based zoning.
I mean, it would, there could be a recommended action to consider the-
Yeah.
The minimum to encourage form-based zoning or something like that.
Sure, let's do something like that. Just what you would.
Well, to tie a couple of these things together, so five and six both make reference to the three acres or more, and I don't think we need that duplication.
Yeah, that was originally, yeah, why did that happen? Yeah, so, I mean, you want to take it out of five?
Yeah, it just, it doesn't need to be in both places. So, let's see.
I mean-
Will you just get rid of five?
It almost seems, seems like it. Or you just revise five so that it's encouraging adoption of form-based zoning, but you've already got that.
Hey, what does five add that six doesn't cover?
That's what I would say. I think if you cut five-
Put something about form-based zoning in six, it could be a-
What about all the bullets?
Also, I mean, it could be the top bullet, it could be mentioned in the first sentence or so.
So, remove five and add a bullet to six that just says, "Find ways to encourage adoption of form-based zoning."
Because what you're saying is that they need to be PUDs with designed to encourage the following characteristics, you know? One would be, give priority to those, or, you know, something about preferring form-based.
Right, so, maybe before-
Well, yeah, they're, they're separate tracks, so, I mean, the way that that last sentence in five is, is worded is it puts you on the PUD track. So, I'm wondering whether or not-
Take it out of four?
Or?
Four, dash, five.
Well-
You could just say, so you sort of use the sentence that was there in the old five, require that with designed to achieve desired mixed-use neighborhoods with the following characteristics. So, in other words, take the sentence that's highlighted in six, swap it with the five, basically, and add with the following characteristics after.
Add with the following characteristics af, yeah, show me what you're-
Let me show you what I was thinking was, so it would look something like this, I guess. And I would cut.
Oh, and then get rid of five.
Yeah, get rid of five.
Yeah.
So, in that highlighted sentence, remove until, the first until.
Right. So, basically deleting all this part?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that tightens it up.
Yeah. We good with that? All right. Takes out that duplication?
Remove the three-acre language from both points now.
Yeah, if, it, I mean, this is, it's saying continue to require. So, then, I mean, with that-
Can I set my own change here?
Yeah.
Doesn't look like it.
Really?
Seems to have some authority still, right?
That's right. I really thought you could.
So, you're going to say a suggest-only link?
Well, well.
Yeah, you should be able to.
It was just the link from the email you had sent.
Yeah, and that was the suggestion link.
Right.
So, then, my comments can be resolved?
Still have the five there. We're going to address form-based zoning anyway, I'm just-
Right.
Wondering if we shouldn't be encouraging something here.
Should we just add a line? I mean, it doesn't necessarily need to specify acreage, but just to have a line to acknowledge, continue to investigate ways of-
Encouraging.
Encouraging better adoption of form-based zoning.
And we're, or working towards adopting form-based zoning.
So, just five will be a statement about encourage the further.
Yeah, because that, that's where that would most apply anyway.
And-
Well, but hang on a second, because we already have the first objective.
Yeah, so, I thought it was-
Well, but that's an objective, and we need a recommended action. Number four recommended action is to continue to refine form-based zoning requirements. So, we could just add to number four. Uh, no, all right, we changed something around last time. I withdraw that.
So, I just typed this because of the suggestion, but I don't have to put it in.
Well, I think it's good to, to say it. If it doesn't say anything about encouraging the continued development of form-based zoning, I think we should have that, and that seems like a good spot. But if it could be piggybacked onto-
Number one.
Number one.
Can it just be part of number one, too?
Yeah.
We're basically saying, making it de facto in mixed use, and then secondarily you could say it's-
All right, just if you could add that, what you just typed, Dean, to, in line five, just add it as the third sentence in, in objective one. It seems like that would cover it and simplify it a little bit.
Do you have to call it growth area two, or no?
Technically, that's the section we're in, right? But I guess it doesn't matter.
I mean, and I just, now-
I mean, just specificity, that's what we're, doesn't hurt.
No, not at all.
We use that term throughout the rest of the section.
Yeah, I mean, and I had an experience just this afternoon where somebody came up, and there's actually, there are two lots owned by the same party. One of the lots is in the form-based overlay district, and the other one is not. And I'm not sure that the boundary makes any sense, so it's, to me, justifies this language, because we do need to revisit that boundary, I think.
Is that the motel?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know why it was that, it was crazy.
So, we do have as a recommended action, number four, to continue to refine form-based zoning requirements. Should we have a relatable objective? I mean, we have two is to advertise the advantages of it.
Right, so-
We could also just add to number two and say, and incorporate suggestions that may lead to better adoption? Something along those lines?
The real goal is to adopt the form-based zoning in its entirety at some point.
Right.
At some point, we have to move forward and, and make it the de facto zoning. I would agree.
Something like that? I mean, because it's an option, so we want to create, we want to advertise, and we want to encourage them to opt-in to use it. Essentially, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, being an objective, is this something where we want to clarify to say to get us closer to adopting form-based zoning as de facto? I mean, is that worth clarifying, or?
We probably have to go through what we've got waiting for us, which is phase-
That's the number one.
Oh, it does, yeah.
Phase two, which is already waiting, is sitting there waiting for us, isn't it?
You have that set of changes, you could, yeah.
So, we need to get that going, because that's work that's already been done, and we just really need to review and accept our change. So, I don't even know what that has done.
Well, the, the two concepts that we're talking about, though, is getting us closer to de facto, which is a number one, and then encouraging use of it, which is number two.
Right.
Right, number one says both of those things.
That's true, so we technically wouldn't need-
Talking about getting rid of two now?
Yeah.
What's the, why does it say de facto? Why not just as the zoning for mixed-use corridor?
Well, I think Kate has, yeah, it's, it's a subtle distinction, but it's an optional aspect of the zoning regs, and she has wanted it to become the default, or some people had wanted it to become the default or de facto. And yes, it would mean, it would be the zoning, but I think it helps some people understand, but you're right, it would become the zoning, but some people might say, well, wait, there already is the zoning. What do you mean? It's opt-in, that's why I had written in opt-in, and we could have a paragraph or something that explains to people how it actually works, because most people don't understand that it's optional.
So, for the- So for the, all right, well, for the purpose of the plan, though. I wouldn't have any objection to removing number two, cuz I think everything is included in one. But at the same, I also realize that we've got roughly fifteen to twenty minutes left on this section and we've made it through a page and a half.
I think it couldn't hurt to advertise the advantages somehow. I'm not sure how, but I don't have a problem with leaving two in.
Okay. Does anybody feel strongly?
I'm just trying.
All right. Then. Okay. So that, these are the objectives under number two.
You had a good note on number four.
Oh, right.
When you're talking about that, was that the one by cover across from the post office?
Yes, yeah.
Who was it?
Yeah, I think it was more when we're talking about enhancing sense of place. It's great to say that we wanna do that. I'm just curious if any of that was taken into consideration with the new development on Falls Road.
And when you say the new development along Falls Road.
Like across from the post office, new houses that are there.
Near the post office, so with the Posey development.
Yes.
The so-called Posey development across from.
Yeah, and I'm not saying I have any problems with that. It was more a comment on. I get that we're saying in the plan that we wanna enhance sense of place, so. Did that happen? Were there any discussions that build that in? Is there deeper clarifying language that we need or? Cuz I know there were comments around how that didn't necessarily reflect the historic nature of being in the village, so I'm wondering where our process is.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of how to respond to that. The design review process did take place and it resulted in the buildings that you see today. I think that it would have been possible for different buildings, buildings that people might have felt were more historic or in keeping with the village. It could have happened.
The structure up the road that was just built is more in line.
Some of this is, I think, a matter not of changing the requirements as much as the people that are administering them have to be comfortable. Holding their ground, asking for things that they think should be delivered and holding their ground. I mean, you could change the language, but it's in the design review process, design review district and the design review process is fairly clear. And the design guidelines are there. They were updated after that project was first approved, but.
So and for the purpose of the plan, I think having this in there as an objective is fine. My comment was just more around. I guess for thought, down the line, does this narrow things down to, do we need? Do we need to be more specific so that the DRB has guidelines to ensure that. That sense of place desire is fulfilled in terms of matching the rest of the village. Or falling in.
I mean, this is an objective. I think if there was, if there was a corresponding recommended action that you wanted to make that said something about. Make sure that the design review guidelines are updated at least once every five years or something like that. Modify the zoning regulations to more tightly integrate recommendations in the design guidelines or something like that.
And we have that in number six, so this is fine. That was just a comment that jumped out at me when I first reviewed this, so you can resolve that. And I think we're good with recommended action number six that says just that.
So are we okay?
Yeah, you can just resolve that comment. So any other comments around any of the objectives? I did have a note on, oh.
Needing the reference?
Well, it's just, I imagine it won't be table X. It'll be an actual table reference. But under recommended actions, number seven, I think it is. Ensuring that roads and residential areas are no wider than necessary to provide access. And I think previously, didn't we have references around ten, like roads had to be ten feet wide or something?
Uh, but we're not seeing that edit here?
No, it was more just, well, I suppose saying that ensure that they're no wider than necessary, the necessary would be whatever our zoning bylaws say. It probably was. We don't need to get hung up on it.
Well, the issue of the width that the lanes are striped out has been a big issue as of late. And I think sometimes, and maybe when the plan was done before, it wasn't easy to get strong consensus on the number. And this was just making the point that it tried to make it as narrow as can be. It's gonna need to vary depending on the type of neighborhood and the volume of traffic.
Cuz it would still fall into the other zoning bylaws that would have to be honored.
Were those standards recently reviewed or?
The public work specifications have not been updated for the transportation in a lot of years. Maybe ten. Seven. Is that Mike working or? We're not there yet. We're getting close.
All right.
So to stay here, though, for the meantime, where does it say where the road width should be?
Yeah. I was just looking for. I don't know that.
Is it covered?
Yeah, there it is. It was a proposal, number six.
So this was, yeah, this was language that got, was a proposed change.
Okay. Great, okay, so it is in there.
Yeah, it's there.
Yeah, now this is in the village. So it's specific to the village. And.
Do we wanna expand to further out?
Well, the bylaws themselves have it. This is, these are objectives in the plan. So unless we wanna get into saying that, hey, a recommended action is to review street widths or something in the zoning bylaws, which I think we can already do. Just as the planning commission, if there's any need for it.
So we've answered the question, where is that width mentioned?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I guess to clarify my point, I'm not necessarily seeing a conflict. It was more just saying that we wanna make these things as narrow as possible, and there had been a previous reference to something about width. So I was just looking to make sure we were being consistent, but I think that those are unrelated in that way. Well, if nothing else in growth area two, we could go into the rural. And Gail, did you have a?
I thought that I might have made a comment in the beginning of the rural area and at the end of the paragraph. And I may, it may have been that I made it somewhere else cuz I didn't on the computer and it's not on my written notes, but something about that not every place is suitable for. Traditional forms of recreation. And something about passive recreation. In that first paragraph that has the underlying title, the end of it. Maybe it wasn't there that I made it.
Yeah, I didn't see that, but I, there is a comment that you made that's just above it, that I don't know that it had any discussion that had to do with water. It goes back to June 23rd. Using state guidelines as a minimum, update regulations establishing appropriate buffers. And then you proposed when a water body or waterway is threatened, encourage the DRB to exceed minimum buffer requirements. So that. That's just above, that's in the, that's in the rural, I'm sorry, that's in the growth area two. And there was.
I was concerned about that because of the area in School Street where McCabe's Brook runs through. And I believe that is close to becoming. An MS four, and so we ought to be cognizant of that.
Can you, what's MS four?
MS four is one of the designated threatened waterways like Monroe Brook is.
Yeah, it's a little, little different. MS four is the municipals, it would be part of the municipal stormwater system that's subject to the Clean Water Act regulations that we have to follow. But Gail is drawing attention to the fact that the water quality in McCabe's Brook has been declining and that it could move into the place where it becomes impaired. And depending on what it's impaired for, it could make, it could cause a big jump in the responsibilities that we have for cleanup. In the same way, we're trying to clean up things in Monroe Brook and that watershed, if it was impaired due to stormwater, we would have a whole additional area.
Thank you. Explanation.
So this comment. I mean, do you? Yeah, where the.
Does that language make sense within that context?
Well, I think, you know, I think the idea of updating the regulations to establish appropriate buffers, that's an idea that's been around for a long time. And so saying that if there's a waterway that could become impaired, to have a higher requirement or stricter requirement, that makes some sense too. But it's encourage the DRB to exceed minimum, you know, when it comes to the zoning regulations, if it's encouraging, then. I mean, I don't think you mean it to be discretionary, right? You want the DRB to.
Allow them as opposed to encourage them.
Yeah, you want to have authorized the DRB to apply larger buffer requirements or something like that.
Or to create a mechanism that automatically. Causes a larger buffer area to be increased by a certain amount or.
The DRB could already exceed minimum buffer requirements, couldn't they?
They tend not to.
Oh.
When it's not in the regs.
Okay.
Yeah, if they are overstepping their bounds, then that could cause a problem for the DRB to account.
We struggled with that.
Unless there's something that encourages or authorizes, I like the idea of saying authorize.
All right, I see.
Or do we change the buffer standards around certain.
Right.
Classifications of water.
Yeah, I think that that would be the action.
Can you get rid of? Allow in, just stick with authorize?
I'm thinking, oh, uh, got it, yeah, I wasn't even seeing that. So what a water body.
And I could see following that path could result in just coming up with a categorization that if something is deemed to be close to being impaired or is already in trouble, then increase the minimum requirements in those cases. All right.
Maybe we should just review the buffer in the MS four district as opposed to trying to influence the DRB.
Right. There's a lot of different things we could do. At this point, just being completely frank, we've spent several sessions on this section. And every time we don't finish it, we get a new printout and things are all out of order and it just gets really confusing. So I'm really trying to focus on making sure that the key ideas that we need to get into the plan so that we can get that draft to the select board are in there. If there's anything blatant that we need to correct, cuz we could go down the rabbit hole on any one of these things.
All right, and the language is there, so.
And I think that this is, at least in my eyes, and I'm happy to be challenged on any of this, but in my eyes, I see that this would be enough to facilitate the conversation that could lead us down the path of increasing the minimum requirements. Versus just saying, okay, we'll come up with language to authorize the DRB to do that. Action would need to happen one way or another. It's not just that being stated in the plan doesn't make it so. So is there anything else in prior to the rural area? Cuz.
Question I had was the. I guess the foregoing design and conservation principles in number twelve. Is that just referencing back to everything we've just stated?
I think that's how it was written like two or three plans ago and it's carried through.
Okay.
But.
So do we need it?
Well, I mean, it's kind of amorphous.
It is, cuz any, any development or redevelopment in that area does need to subscribe to those principles.
It just seemed like a kind of unnecessary last thing that could probably just be struck.
I would be good with that. Is there?
So twelve is gone.
Okay, yeah, twelve goes away.
Okay.
And my comment there was just more around, this is a reference to the vision statement, and I just wanted to make sure that that is still what is in our revised vision statement.
I actually.
And that could be something where we just keep the comment in there and as we're going through it.
We will flag it, yeah.
Can we edit the last sentence of that paragraph about the.
Traditional.
Traditional versus newly emerging and just describe. Activities for community for recreation.
Or all forms of recreation or something.
Right, and maybe not even list them necessarily.
Right.
Well, it depends. We might have somebody who has a definition of recreation that is slightly off kilter.
Well, this is part of where Gail was looking at passive recreation, I think, too, right?
Yeah, because there are some of the areas that are open space areas that have been conserved that are not appropriate for things like snowmobiling or biking and that sort of thing, but walking is probably not.
So you could cross-country ski but not snowmobile, you could walk but not bike, right?
Yeah.
Instead of all, just have various.
Varied or various?
Yeah.
Do you need to add something like allowed? For various allowed forms of recreation?
That would further qualify it.
I'm just thinking in terms of Gail's point of.
Would it be posted if biking and snowmobiling weren't allowed on a particular piece of property, would that be posted?
Yeah, I mean, I know near me, there's a trail that I can hook on to on my skis and as you turn a corner, there's a trail that's basically like snowmobiles only, no skiing, no hiking. You know, so it's, it can go the other way too.
Hence, probably more to prevent injury than to prevent the sport.
Yeah, I don't think that you could.
And liability.
If it's not allowed, it's not allowed.
Fair enough.
Works for me.
Okay, all right. Then I think it was in the last, my next comment was in the last paragraph of the next page.
Okay, this, should it be moved? That one is not.
Oh, yeah, well, I mean, just from a document flow, we traditionally have the goal right before the objectives, if I'm not mistaken. If I'm not mistaken, yeah.
Oh, rather than having that intervening text.
Yeah. So in this case, there's an intro about the rural area and then it would be the goal set of objectives.
How much of this stuff would be picked up by, I mean, there's, somebody mentioned there's an editor that's going to be editing all this?
Right.
Pick up stuff that, that's you?
I think working with Maya, yeah, just, you know, once we've kind of cleaned it all up, just taking another part, I mean, I'm assuming would all have final reads, but, you know, I would try and take more of a close edit.
Okay, all right, thank you for doing that.
And most, most of my comments, when I go through it, are small things like that, but then when we get into it, it gets really distracting, so it's probably better to do that.
Sure.
So is, are we on 25 now?
Yes.
So is this sentence still necessary that's next to the last one? That says some of the rural areas experience residential development that is not consistent with the overall rural character.
Where are you?
Right here.
It's current page 25. Got it.
There, yeah.
Thank you.
So I'm wondering if that is really necessary, if there's no follow-up. Unless that last paragraph is
Last year with the middle range.
supposed to be tied into that? And it doesn't seem to need it.
I, I mean, I think it could be, it could become the first par, first sentence of the next paragraph effectively.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, let's do that.
Actually, doesn't it, yeah, it looks like that was intended.
I think that's what she was trying to do, it's just one of those editing formatting things.
So accept the strike through?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, that's better, maybe it's better.
And is there in that, I think it's the third, no, second sentence ends with quality places being capitalized, is that a term that we've been using?
Quality places? I don't think so.
So, yeah, first comment is that it shouldn't be capitalized, but second comment is without a definition, I'm not sure what that means.
Right. Tiki-tack, I think you can get rid of that floating A at the end too of the. Just looks so sad and lonely there.
Right.
I think she's trying to say rural hamlets conceived through form-based zoning could create templates, but she has like koodle.
And, and I'm still on the quality places thing.
Right, I'm trying to understand what she's trying to say.
All right, well, I think she capitalized it, that's why I'm wondering, is it, did you do a search for that or no?
Oh, because it's in the goal.
Oh, yeah.
Wait, where, sorry, can you go back?
Was that in the goal of the, it's not in the goal of the rural?
It's on page five or six, so it's future land use, it's like the number one first goal of all land use, future land use.
Yes.
So it is a term she's.
It's not a very good term though, I think there should be something a little more definitive.
Well, it's, all right. So to say that loud, so we're talking about pursuing future land use in a goal to create quality places, but then that comment that we have was talking about retrofitting quality places, which assumes that they already exist. I think that's where the confusion came in. I'd, I'd be, I'd be more in line with just not having that second quality places reference and just say maybe retrofit existing areas or something like that. I, I think that's fine in the goal, because it sets the tone. It should probably still be defined, because it's a little vague.
Reads better in the goal than it does
Yeah.
in a second.
So, yeah, we, we missed it when we were talking about growth area two, so it's there as well, and so you're saying remove it.
I, I'm not, I'm not saying it needs to be removed across the board, there, there's certainly an argument for being more clear on what that.
It looked like it was used a lot too in areas we've already Xed out, so I almost wonder if it's a remnant term.
Although you, it's in the goal language.
That's what I mean, but that was at a goal from an old plan.
No.
Is there a better word for quality places?
I can't think of one.
It does, but even if it's.
Quality places is pretty good, I think, I mean, I think we should say it, and it, and that earlier goal seemed to
define what a quality place was, where people want to live, work, play, learn. Sure, and I have no problem with that being in the goal, my, my problem or my issue is having it in the description of the rural area, talking about retrofitting quality places that we're laying out, we want to build quality places, we haven't established, like, we don't have a designation saying that area over there is a quality place, so let's retrofit that. So we're talking about how we want to build this thing, this concept, and then in this particular point, we're talking about retrofitting something that hasn't been defined. So it'd be clearer, I believe, if we just remove that reference on page 25.
Right.
Well, isn't she saying to retrofit sprawl development as into quality places? Isn't, isn't that what she's trying to say?
Yeah, I mean, I think you could do it without the capital Q, capital P, and just say something along the lines of to explore master retrofit areas, retrofit such areas into higher quality places or something to that effect.
Into higher quality places? Yeah, I mean, that's more.
She's brand, this is like a branded thing, I mean, she's trying, this is intentional.
It is.
Because then we have to, we would have to define what's a higher quality place than a sprawl development, so if we let, if we let her stick with the, with the brand.
But, so my point here is that this specific sentence is talking about retrofitting a quality place, but we haven't defined what a quality place is or established that it exists.
Could be a really nice bar.
Well, she defines in the goal, she lists.
Yeah, sorry, I don't mean, I don't mean defined in the document, I mean that there isn't, if somebody said, what are the quality places in Shelburne, there is no distinct list, there is no defined list of what that is. So we're talking, this sentence is talking about retrofitting existing quality places.
Oh, no, I don't think it is.
That's.
I think it's saying, it, maybe the word as is, is making it sound like that. It, maybe it should be retrofit such areas to become quality places.
Sure, perfect, that would be great. Yeah, so. There you go. And then at least that's consistent with the original layout. Is that good?
Yeah, that's what I thought she was getting at all along.
Okay.
Do you want to go to caps or leave it in no caps?
I like the caps, yeah.
Okay.
Well, in this case, it's different, that this, now it's within a proper context.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Pursuing that agenda, okay.
Why do you have the brackets?
I don't know why those are there. And I made that edit, so I should.
Right, that's what I.
I think it was just draw attention to the fact that, you know, if there's, if there's consensus on having form-based zoning in the rural district, it, it's fine, but I wasn't sure, or I'm not sure that there is consensus on using form-based zoning. But if there is, it's, 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 yeah, it's fine.
But this would have to be written into form-based zoning, because we haven't adopted that in the rural district.
And it would probably be pretty different than the former's kind.
Right.
Yeah, it's going to be its own thing.
So would we need to specify something like rural hamlets potentially conceived through form-based zoning or?
I guess for me, it was that it's not necessarily to say that they're conceived through form-based zoning or anything. It's rural hamlets could create templates for development patterns more compatible with surrounding character to achieve desired forms. I, I mean, the idea is using hamlets, however we accomplish them.
Right, so, so that would mean we could get rid of conceived through form-based zoning?
Uh, that's kind of where my thoughts are.
Makes sense to me.
Is that agreeable?
Deleting it?
Yeah. All right. I think my next comment was on page 31, so unless there's anything, do we have anything in between there?
Do you want to accept cases as we go too?
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out this beginning part of this sentence, some of the rural area, is that really, because it's got a strike through. I'm just trying to find out where that was coming from. That is how we want that paragraph to, to lead off, right? Some of the rural area.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to.
Or is she trying to get rid of all of the word some of, the rural area?
Yeah.
It reads fine.
What parts of?
Maybe we don't need that some of, maybe we just go to the rural area.
She wants to say the rural area.
Maybe we just say the rural area.
Some residential development, instead of starting the sentence with some.
Love it.
That is not consistent.
Yeah, that would work too.
Yeah.
So there was one thought, Jason, that you had.
It's just, I think it's the same discussion.
We'll be talking about maps, yeah.
Yeah. So this can be accepted. That was in our last packet.
Since we're talking about the rural area, I, I'm not to put you guys on the spot, I know that you are here and they weren't here at the beginning of the meeting and I wasn't sure if they were going to be, but I do know the Minnias, this is the Minnias, were here because of interest in the rural area, and so we're talking about the rural area, so just heads up everybody.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and, yeah, thanks for pointing that out. Were there, were you coming to see the, this discussion or did you have some open comments?
We had actually an issue that we would like to submit to the planning, thank you Dean.
Sure.
Hi, hi, Dick and Peg Minnay, and, and I'd probably like to read it, since we're not too up to date on how to, the format goes, but we'd like to revisit the issue of subdividing a 10-acre lot into two 5-acre lots. The regulations show that because there is slope greater than 15% that we cannot subdivide it to two 5-acre lots. And the reason, I guess, is controlled density within the rural area. So this has been an issue with us as for years, we'd like to subdivide, continue to reside in Shelburne and sell the other 5-acre lot with the house on it, so. So that, we were here to see if the board would consider opening up that issue. I have a discussion on it. So I don't know if anybody has any comments or question about this.
Could you repeat the, the issue, it's to subdivide a 10 into 5 acres, but part of it has greater slopes than?
Yes, the 10 acres that we live on with the house has slope greater than fif, than 15%. Uh, 5%, I'm sorry, right, 5%?
15.
Uh, 15.
15, okay, I'm correct, sorry.
And the reason I flagged the Minnias is just because this paragraph is referring to development in the rural area, it should be limited, low density, and I know that the issue that the Minnias has have concerns about is related to this, so back in the early 2000s when the town plan was being updated, there was interest in keeping the rural area rural and there was discussion of different ways that it could happen. One would be to change the land area required from 5 acres to 10 acres. That would have had a pretty significant change, and another way of addressing this idea is to say not 5 acres to 10 acres, but how we count the 5 acres will be different. And we got into what we call sometimes developable area, and so the 5 acres don't include areas mapped as floodplain, areas mapped as wetland, and areas with slopes. And so, so that way that the density and the development potential in the rural area was modified after that plan got adopted was to incorporate in the rigs this developable area concept. How it affects the Minnias is that they own a parcel, it doesn't have any floodplain, it doesn't have wetlands, but it does have slopes. And there's enough slope in it that it reduces the size of the lot and they can't subdivide it, because it's not 10 acres, it's nine point something. And they have been to the commission at least two times before, and this issue hasn't really gotten fully resolved, it's, it's come close and essentially been rejected, but I knew and told them, because they had asked for a meeting, that the discussion of future land use is part of the town plan, maybe a time to broach the subject, and it may also be something where you say, wow, this is really too specific, it's too much about zoning, but it's worth talking, talking about and scheduling the time for. So that may be where this goes.
Well, well, we're, we're hearing one specific case, but Dean, like, how many cases could this apply to?
Well, it, I mean, it all depends on what is decided, if we were to go, if we were to drop this developable area concept entirely, I'd have to go into the computer and ask the question and it would tell me, I don't know off the top of my head. But something that has been considered in the past is an intermediate approach where we keep the concept, but we establish a floor. And we say, if we're talking about a lot that's greater than, say, 20 acres, that's when the developable area kicks in. But if it's a lot that's less than 20 acres, we just use straight acreage. And so if the question, if that's the question, I'm going to give you a different answer. It'll, it'll be a different number of parcels, obviously, far fewer.
So it's the, the idea that if it's something like 20 acres or whatever the floor is, it's a high enough floor that it's going to like discourage broad-based development, land development.
The little guy, so to speak, isn't affected by this policy. And the planning commission, a number of years ago, I thought came very, very close to buying into this concept, but then at the last minute, it, it changed.
You know why?
Yeah, we lost because someone wanted to delete it from the
Yeah, they want to get rid of it entirely.
They want to get rid of it entirely.
Yeah.
It's a density tool, it was, so that was, it went down, it was very close, it was one vote, I think.
It was, yeah, one, one vote basically away, and, and yes, they drew a line that was, they didn't like this idea at all, and rather than taking half a loaf, there was no loaf.
Is, is this something that we could find time on a future agenda to?
Well, if there's, if, I think of it as like a next level.
It is a zoning issue.
Right.
Unless, unless there's enough of a consensus to, to agree on language that should go in a section of the plan, like the one that you're just working on. I mean, I don't know that there is, but you have language that talks about reevaluating the zoning, you know, so it's, it's embedded in that, I just don't know that there's.
If you scroll down a little bit, is it objective number two? That we're talking about specifically?
Yeah, so this, this is, this is language that is referring to the status quo. Excluded from development locations that have these constraints.
Right, I mean, if you take the history of it, prior to this plan, they had 10 acres, it was subdivided into five. This plan's developed with this language, which then excludes just enough to make it not subdividable anymore, sorry.
Well, this, the idea goes back to, I believe, the 2007 plan, so
Okay.
It's been in, it's not just this, it goes back to the plan of 2007, because those changes were adopted, I think, in 2008.
It was before me. I sat through that, but I wasn't on the commission, I'd been on the commission 12 years. Well, this is the twelfth year, so it was before two thousand and seven. Was it two thousand and five, I think?
Well, it might have started being developed then, but the plan didn't actually get adopted.
I remember the discussion about the ten acres going to ten acres. And that's, and that's where this came from, and I don't know where they got it from.
So, couple observations. Even if we have, I mean, we, we can certainly add language to this, but I think that we do, and I, I mean, my comment there is actually questioning the steep slopes aspect. So, from an objective standpoint, I think the plan is facilitating future discussions. But for this particular instance, is this something that we could, if we're in agreement, we could carve out some time on a, on a future agenda to really discuss the detail from a zoning bylaw as they exist today? Because that would be.
Part of this should go into the discussion on hamlets and transferring of development rights and things. So it should be a combination. And plus, we want to rework some of the zoning in that district, too, so it should be a larger context, not just a single item.
I, I'm okay with, I'd be okay with that as well. I think in this particular case, and the reason for my comment here is that the, I'll say, I believe that the intent behind not developing on fifteen percent slopes or more is because of the erosion and side effects that can happen. So if that's the problem that's trying to be addressed, and if those issues can be addressed through the way that that land is developed, then that addresses the concern versus just having a blanket restriction.
We don't, we don't stop someone from building on slopes.
No, but we're.
We don't have a control.
But in this particular case.
It's for zoning density. It was created not, it wasn't really a.
Then it doesn't make sense to me.
Well, it was in lieu of switching from five-acre lots to ten-acre, or switching back to ten-acre or something. This was all ten.
So it was like, it was like a compromise, kind of?
This was a compromise that was created. And at the same time they did that, they, so they reduced the density in the rural area, and they, we, or they increased the density in some of the other areas in the village, in residential, too.
But the, isn't the crux of this issue is that we're saying that it's the definition of developable land, and we're saying that land that has a fifteen percent or more slope is not developable, and I'm challenging that.
It's an unfortunate title for it, because, yeah, you know, you give an engineer the ability to do it, and they can develop on fifteen percent slope. It's, it's, it's just misnamed.
But, but I'm saying, within the context of understanding why that rule was put in there, which is to address erosion, I'm, I mean, yes, you could develop.
It's, it's not. Or as Dick said, it was really a compromise.
It has nothing to do with erosion.
It's about, it's about density.
Zoning, it's a zoning issue. It was a way to contain zoning, or restrict zoning.
And unfortunately, there's.
It basically takes their lot.
Their small lot.
Out of being subdivided in a backdoor way. It was a backdoor zoning vote.
Or, I think of it another way, is that, you know, the question was five acres, ten acres, or something like developable area, or something like six point five acres per lot. Because, you know, if we did the math on all of the land that could potentially be subdivided, it might work out to be something like, on average, six, you know, one and a half acres per five acres is. And so instead of, it was just an alternative path to reducing density.
See, I think the way to address this is to do it through the PUD, to re-go, we go back into the PUDs and redo the zoning. It's, whether it's erosion or whatever reason it is, that's, I think, the way to do it would be to go through the PUDs and look at the whole landmass and redefine what we want to do.
And, and I agree with you, and I thank you for the clarification on density. And I do agree that that could be part of the larger discussion, where if you have a twenty-acre plot that has five-acre, four, five-acre lots within that, you'd, you would want to concentrate the building in the center of that or something, so that you've got, you're maintaining your open space.
Right.
So, again, I mean, is this something where we could have a, a thirty-minute discussion on this with the various?
I don't know that would accomplish as much as it would, we hurry up, finish the town plan, and then address the zoning. This is an issue I've been wanting to do for two years.
Fair enough. Well, I mean, then that means we wouldn't really be getting to this until February.
Um, and it depends how, is our schedule that full where we can't start other projects, or?
Well, you might be able to squeeze something in. I wouldn't, you know, Mr. Chairman can allocate the time on the.
Typically, with something like this, we wouldn't start for a month.
Probably not, it's probably not realistic that you'd, you'd get a good chunk of time for a couple.
So even if we change the planning, we're still, we still have to change the zoning.
Is this something that we can discuss, like, out of, that like a few of us, whoever?
We already have the means. We don't have to change planning to do this.
Right, no, yeah, I, I think every.
Discussing the planning part of it is, I think, a waste of time. I think we need to change the zoning. That's what we have to do to make it effective.
Can I give you the checklist of, uh?
One of the options that was given to us years ago, when we first visited, this, this problem was that if we could find two to three acres, or whatever we need, within the rural area, then we could buy that on paper, we could leave it to their discretion, what they wanted to do with it. We don't want the land, other than using it, to attach to the remaining land, which seems to describe the problem than what you were talking about. So it's not about erosion. Because if you could still build on that property, nothing changed in the way that our property reads.
Completely agree, and, yeah, and with Dick's clarification, I get it now that that's more of a density mechanism.
Yes.
So, but, but I just, I want to be able to have the discussion to understand the details around this and what the implications are, so that we can get to the point of actually changing the bylaws, so that this does not become an issue.
Right, okay.
Yeah, for the discussion, but I just, I really think we need to pile into the PUD thing, and it'll take us two or three sessions to probably do that.
Okay, so when, when we're scheduling, then we'll just need to make sure that we.
Well, is there, is there a way that, Dick's obviously thought a lot about this, thinks it's important. We've all been working on different sections of the plan. Is that something Dick and someone could be working on at the same time, you know?
I mean, to have a proposal for.
So that when we get together, there's, you've kind of done the heavy lifting and thinking, and here's what I think should happen.
I'm a favor of that. I have some fairly, I have some ideas.
Well, I mean, it seems like you're the most knowledgeable and the most invested. Would make sense.
Yeah, I'm up to that.
As far as this language is concerned, but one thing I would point out is that as objective two is written, that second, or the last sentence says, in pretty clear terms, undevelopable land area such as wetlands, steep slopes, floodplains shall not be counted in determining density. So if there's serious thought being given to pulling away from that idea as part of a discussion of zoning changes, I, if you get into a zoning discussion, someone could come to that meeting and say, but wait, you got language in the town plans that says that shall not be counted. How do you, how do you reconcile the two? So one thought might be to change shall to should, so that at the very least, you're saying it's not an absolute.
Well, what about if we just consider making the change as we've been doing?
And it's not specific here. It's a significant, it's a steep, it, it doesn't say fifteen percent.
Yep, I, I hear you.
Is fifteen percent a definite part of the definition?
Well, it's the way that, it's the number that's been chosen, but for the use in that, in that definition. So, you know, it guided, someone at some point must have thought it was steep.
Do you know that, is that what I was saying, he had any?
Yeah.
This is St. Albans. And I was looking at a property in St. Albans about doing a subdivision. And basically, they treat steep slopes as fifteen percent.
Okay.
Subject to DRB site plan and review procedures, under the provision of DRB may require for review and approval, the submission of erosion control, stormwater management plans prepared by licensed professional engineer, which we don't really do in regard to steep slopes. We do it for wetlands and for other stuff.
The other way to attack it here.
So that's just what one.
The other way to attack it here, number two, I think, is to just get rid of the word steep slopes.
Yeah, yeah.
Because, you know, you, you can't develop on unstable soils, you can't develop on flood hazard areas, but you can develop on a slope.
But you shouldn't probably develop on, there is a, a point where erosion does occur on a slope. Maybe it's not fifteen, maybe it's seventeen.
Understood, but I guess what we're saying here is if we're going to determine for density purposes, you should take out the places that you really can't build. And putting in the slopes seems to include in that calculation stuff that is buildable.
But it's not about really buildable, it's about density. It's going back to zoning density.
Again, I'm trying to come up with a solution here that would help these guys not change dramatically, but it feels like that's the piece in here.
But if we change the steep slopes, it does change the whole, it doesn't just change this one property.
But it doesn't, it doesn't make a, it makes a differentiation. If you have a perfectly flat parking lot site, you can go ahead and develop that whole thing. But if you have some slopes and fifteen percent, it's not a, that's not a big slope. You know, all of a sudden, you can't develop that property. But it, it, I don't see why, you know, we'd want to encourage people to develop a perfectly flat slope and discourage somebody who has just a little bit of, of slope happening. It didn't, doesn't make sense to me, because it's, it's just, it's just like you're saying, Andrew.
We're defining it as undevelopable land area, such as wetlands and floodplains should not be counted in determining density. That seems to capture it. If we wanted to define slope as true, I mean, there, there is some slope that's undevelopable.
Right, if we want to. Maintain a rural area, not increasing densities. If you take out the steep slopes, I'm not sure. I think we need to do a study prior to doing that, before we.
Right.
Do something.
In the zoning regulations themselves, which is not part of this, say that, that building envelope should not be on slopes of such and such and still be able to use other parts of that property, if you're not dealing with simply looking at density.
Yeah.
One of my ideas is to change the PUDs, so that the lots are actually become, you don't have two five-acre lots. You maybe have two, two, two-acre lots adjoining each other, and then the rest of the land goes, is protected. So the lot is still held by the owners. But that's one way of, of protecting erosion, reducing, and keeping the houses closer to the roads. So it's all, you know, that's, that's why I think that we need to go at it from the zoning perspective, as opposed to.
One thing more, if I don't mind, could I be listening out? We did hire Dave Marshall, civil engineer, so he did a soil test. We were out there digging holes. Where we proposed to have this lot, this house built, and this lot is completely flat. If somebody would like to come from the board or commission and see the area, I think you'd be satisfied and say, hey, we don't really have a slope area here, but there is slope that's in, within this ten-acre, that, that seems to be the problem.
Yeah, and it, and it has to do with our, our rules on density controls, so.
Yes.
Completely understand that, and I think that we've completely murdered this horse tonight. And we're, we're not going to be able to, we, we can't change the bylaws in this section. I think we've done a great job of highlighting the issue, and I would like to, Dean, we can work on how we might phase in some sessions to.
Well, and I am comforted that if this were to go forward, that second five acres, that there would be a fair amount of control over how that could be developed, and that's, I think, what's really important. It starts to be thinking about now.
And that's where the PUDs come in.
And, and I would be really interested in hearing the proposal that you're, that you're thinking about, and how, how we can still consider our density controls without having restrictions that hurt in these particular examples. And Dean, the point, so thank you very much for raising that. Yeah, and Dean, your point on what's highlighted there in that sentence is, I.
It's Andrew's, I mean, that was the reason I highlighted it, was the Andrew's.
Comment that it seemed, well, if you took out steep slopes.
You actually have a quote on it. Click on steep slopes there.
Right, that was just my comment, that I didn't think that that should be included in, it, it, that shouldn't be counted against developable land, because a steep slope doesn't inherently mean that it's not developable.
Right, but that's what I was saying.
Right, so then the last sentence, if we're saying that steep slopes shall be counted in determining density, that we either get rid of that or make shall to should, and hope it doesn't get caught in the net where we change all the shoulds to shells.
That's, I took that to be something like Andrew's comment, and that's what I was highlighting the steep slopes, steep slopes for. It still says undevelopable land area. It's, it's saying such as, you know, there'll be a future discussion that resolves it.
Right. Yeah, so this, I think this gets us on track and retains the spirit.
I don't like to see it go.
And it also keeps. I mean, the thing that it does is that it keeps slopes in the first part, which is about where buildings are actually sited. So, so you don't cite them on the steep slopes, but we haven't committed to a specific amount of slope in determining what density is reduced by, so.
Well, it doesn't, Dean, it doesn't, like, five years from now, somebody's going to read that and just sort of like merge that steep slope into the, the second sentence, possibly. And where we say, where you just took it out, which I think is good. Maybe there should be something just, that just says, building footprints shouldn't be located on steep slopes as in zoning regs, or something like that.
But I like, I mean, I like the way it reads now, because I think it says, you can't develop within a parcel on a steep slope. That's what the first sentence says. Like, we're not going to develop within areas on these places, but when we're defining density, what you should exclude in the calculation are only those pieces that truly can't be developed.
Yeah, I like that.
So it, it kind of catches the idea, we don't want houses built on steep slopes.
I think you're turning.
It's like, it's, I mean, it seems to me that.
I have a problem with that, too.
But you're allowed to count it in the acreage. I think that's what that's saying.
Right.
Yeah.
And it needs to, until we redo the zoning, I think it's a can of worms to take.
But isn't this a step, like, we do this now, and then you can change the regs because the plan has been updated to reflect in different, slightly different reality?
I think we can change the regs, the planning regs, and do the zoning at the same time. We've done it numerous times. It's not, it's very common.
What's the argument for not making that, what we have right there, just going forward with number two as written?
I don't know how it would influence the DRB prior to, I think it would, I think it opens a can of worms.
Well, this, this isn't a zoning regulation. This is.
This is just the town plan.
Town plan. But if it's in the town plan, you know, with the steep slopes included in that sentence, then that's something that definitely says we don't want.
Well, it doesn't.
That counted in the density, but until it's a zoning reg, this.
This is what influences the science.
Can you clean up?
And what people will reference when they're applying for a county permit.
Things there.
They'll say, here your town plan doesn't say anything about not building.
Just so we can read it, like, really cleanly?
So it is gone. It were basically, I think you're effectively changing it without making the steps that need to be done in the zoning first. That's my point.
Well, the, this should come first, shouldn't it?
You can add a modifier if you really wanted to, Dean, to in front of undevelopable, something like totally or completely undeveloped, you know? I mean, like, that's what, that's really what we're trying to say with those two sentences.
The plan and, and the particular.
There are areas within parcels that are undeveloped, and then when we're determining the number, you got to cut out the pieces where building absolutely can't happen. You're not going to, riverbed's not going to count.
Yeah.
I, I like this change. I think, I think this is good, personally.
I don't know, correct me if I'm, am I crazy, saying that you, if we're going to change the zoning regs down the line, you kind of got to change this here first?
Yeah, I mean, I think that the way that it had been written would, would be hard to ignore if, you know, if you've, if you've left the language where it said that it shall not be counted in determining density, and then you start a conversation that would disregard it.
But Dean, we change, when we change a zoning reg, we also change the town plan. That's how we, we've always operated. So we can't, are you saying we can't change zoning without changing the town plan now?
Well, it's all a question of timing and resources. We have a deadline.
What we're effectively doing is changing the town plan, so that it doesn't match up with zoning.
So if we miss this deadline, and the town plan doesn't get adopted, there are no more amendments until there's a new town plan. So there's a priority that needs to be placed on getting a plan. So there's a priority that needs to be placed on getting a plan adopted. That's, that's the thing that.
I don't think it's mutually exclusive, right? So we can change it here, we can address the zoning. Once the plan is adopted, you can do what you're saying. Okay, we see another change, we need to reflect it in the zoning regs and then go back and note that in the town plan. But I mean, I think it, I, I guess I under, I'm baffled by your feeling you have to do it. And that, do the zoning regs first, then come back and change this versus what's, does the order really matter?
I think it does, but I think what it does is it says somebody could go to the DRB and say, look at your town plan. It doesn't say you can't use.
But this hasn't been adopted. This is just.
When this is adopted, the zoning hasn't been changed.
Well, but that's why you're going to be doing your homework over the next week. So by the time the town plan is adopted.
My point is you could change this, this and do the zoning at the same time.
Agreed, I think that's what we're all saying.
But if you leave the steep slopes in here, then it's, it's contain, it continues.
My, my personal feeling on this is if we get rid of the steep slopes reference, I'm totally cool. So the first question would be, are there people that really want to keep sleeps, steep slopes in number two? Because if there are.
I like keeping it where it is.
You want to increase the zone.
But taking it out of the second sentence. Just keep it just the way it's written.
Yeah, I, I agree with Andrew on that.
My mouth voted so, we should move on.
Do you understand why we want it in the first sentence and not the second? At least what, why?
I mean, I, I disagree with including it in the first sentence because I don't think a steep slope should preclude development. But I understand flood hazard area and unstable soils. There's, there's arguments that you can make everywhere. I, I would like to understand the issue a little bit more. And within the context of steep slopes regarding density, I think that's an issue that we need to address. Now we're talking about actual developable land and saying that you cannot develop on steep slopes.
Well, the reason for using the term developable land was to control density.
Right, this is, this is all intertwined, but that's why for me, if we just got rid of steep slopes, I'm good moving on.
It just basically says, well, shall not be contained, maybe you change developable land and take that out. I don't know how you do it.
Well, I mean, the undevelopable already doesn't include steep slopes. We took that out of the second sentence.
Well, you could.
It's not one of these examples.
Such as wetlands.
Takes some of the pressure off.
Well, I mean, you're, this is your, in your professional capacity, you're going to have to end up having to deal with this down the line. You see this as easily enforceable and it's clear.
Well, but my view is, is that this is, the town, the town plan's not a regulatory device. This isn't going to be applied regulatory. So, you know, if, I understand a little bit, I think, where Dick is coming from. But the DRB needs to apply not the town, town plan language, but the language in the zoning regs. And until the zoning regs are changed, developable land area will be as it's defined in the zoning regs. They can't ignore it. And if they do, they're doing something they should not do.
But my issue though is that when we do get to the point of changing the zoning regs, we look at the town plan and we reference what's in there. So if the town plan says something, then that is used to drive what we can and can't do on the zoning.
And the way that this is written now, what the policy that it establishes is that it's no longer, you know, a given that slopes are consideration in density. And that's part of, part of what I think helps you. But the thing that doesn't help you yet is this idea of discouraging or preventing development on steep slopes. And not all slopes are the same. And, and the slopes vary, but even, you know, a slope that could be the same, but two different material types, you're going to have very different results. So.
I mean, what if you, instead of using steep in the first sentence, you have a different modifier for slopes? Because I mean, really what we're talking about is that there are going to be.
Extreme?
Yeah, whatever. I mean, you know, because.
It's all subjective though.
Correct. Steep slopes, it should be left until we can.
Yeah, that's right.
Not having the specific grade gives you lots of wiggle room.
All right, I, I, I could accept leaving that in there as is, just recognizing that it's not defined with any percentage.
Put the pressure on changing the zoning more quickly.
It's also not saying to include it in density calculation. What it's saying is, as we look at parcels to develop, we don't want the building on any one parcel to be done on, as much as possible on slopes, wetlands, et cetera. Which I still think we would prefer, right? From a scenic preservation, rural preservation standpoint that, you know, there are going to be, as we've talked for months, there are, as we look at those areas to develop, there are pieces, sections of land within a developable parcel that are more amenable to building. We'd rather have the development there than put on something that has, is more hazardous or dangerous to the environment.
I, I understand that, that's, that's fine. I mean, are we good keeping it as is or was there?
I'm good.
Yeah, I mean, is.
I'm not, but I'm ready to move on.
Dean, you know, as far as, like, say, a big developer wanted to develop like a hundred and fifty acres and there were like fifty percent of it was steep slopes. By us taking out the steep slopes from this and determining density, they would be able to.
No, because it, it's going to have to, it's going to have to be the result of a bylaw change. The plan language by itself is not going to have any impact on the development. It's going to be the zoning regs. This is, this, this language, not, you know, it's not specific enough in terms of location, in my view, to be considered regulatory. The, the rulings on regulatory enforcement of the town plan are kind of all over the place. But my assessment is, is that this language isn't specific enough and it's not a bylaw, it's a town plan. So the zoning regs are going to control. So if the zoning regs say slope, then that's what the DRB has to consider. If the zoning regs are changed to not mention slope or to change the percentage of slope, then that's what they'll enforce.
Does location of slope have an impact, like if it's on a river?
That isn't, that isn't built into the definition of developable area.
No, I'm thinking ahead.
Could be.
I mean, that would be a way that you could help to define it if it's on, on the bank of a river as opposed to a rolling hillside.
But I think we have rules around setbacks from riverbanks and that sort of thing in other areas.
We have buffers, but there could be some work done on terms of setback from top of bank and things like that. We, we don't have that as a feature of those zoning regs.
So we're keep reverting back to erosion, but it's not about erosion, it's density.
Well, that original sentence in there just basically took density out of the equation and we just removed steep slopes from that.
No, what we're, what we're doing is increasing density. That's what we're talking about. We're not talking about erosion or.
So if, if we kept this, Dean, do you see a problem in keeping this in knowing that we're going to be looking into it as, as part of the zoning regs?
Keeping it like this, like it's changed right now?
And I don't have a problem changing density if that's where we're going.
I, I have a problem with the use of shalls in a plan. And I think that's where a good part of the problem comes from. So my, my feeling is, is that you shouldn't be using shalls unless you are very specific about the location that you're talking about. So if it said undevelopable land areas such as wetlands, floodplains and steep slopes should not be counted in determining density, your, your hands aren't tied. You're free to consider zoning changes that would modify the percent slope or take it out or do something. You know, you're not acting contrary to that policy. But when it says shall.
So can we just make it should?
Yeah, but we just went through a whole series of things where we changed everything to shall.
You did go in that direction and that's.
I'm good with should being okay here. My concern with changing that word was just that it's going to get caught in a sweep if we go through and change all the shalls to shoulds, but, or the other way around. If we can make that should for now, if that satisfies where we are, I think it's sufficiently generic to give us latitude. But I put a high priority on making sure that we actually have that discussion and get into the zoning bylaws.
So we're going back to steep slopes, but it would be should.
I wouldn't even want to put that in there, but that, as long as it's there and it should.
Let's leave that in there, I, I think. And then we'll just look at it and see what that really means in the zoning regs, I think.
So when you move, is this an objective?
Yes.
So it should say something about reevaluating.
Reevaluate, right, in the actions.
What, reevaluate undevelopable land area?
Yeah, I mean, addressing this issue.
Reevaluate whether undevelopable, undevelopable land area.
Or the whole section.
Say that five times fast. I can't say it once either. Yeah, I think that's good as an objective.
Or isn't that recommended action?
Could be.
Probably is. I, yeah, I have lots of comments around those types of arrangements, which we're never going to get through this. But I completely agree with you.
Either way, doesn't matter.
Totally agree.
We'll get to it.
Excuse me, Jason, before we leave, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
We're not really pretty good on how this all works. But the way that this is written, does that give us an opening or doesn't it? Might just want to.
It does, but for, in your case, the zoning bylaws have to be changed. So I, this, this is sufficiently generic to allow that discussion to happen.
I see.
But the key discussion is around actually changing the bylaw.
The zoning.
The zoning, right. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure, and thank you for bringing this up. Okay. So, I mean, legitimately though, are we okay with how to is now? At least in terms of.
Well, we're back to where, how, uh.
Well, we started with the reevaluating, we could have saved that.
Right.
Okay.
To reevaluate, right.
So we.
Got it.
Resolved?
Yeah, I think the key is to reevaluate or. Yeah, why is?
Why is what? Go, go ahead.
It's your idea to put it.
I'm just looking now at what we're at.
Reevaluate.
Jumping out at me. What do we, what do we mean by that?
Technically, it would be a recommended action and it's to say that, but it's, it's indicating that we need to, we should have the discussion we need to have around density and building on slopes and how zoning works. And I, I don't know if you want to go.
So where to?
I mean, my next comment was under the recommended actions.
Oh, sorry.
I'm, uh, can we do a realistic time check? Yeah. Well, I, all right, let's at least get through this section where a couple of. The, so the one that's stricken through, and I, I don't know if I missed it somewhere else, but the allow use of farm structures which allow economic benefits while retaining visual characteristics. I wasn't sure why that was removed.
From imported document. It might have been, is it something that got moved?
That's what I was wondering. It's at least not in that section.
Yeah, this also harkens back to the conversation that was brought up about new village farm some months ago. So I think wise to leave this in.
Right.
Yeah.
Or maybe it would apply to that, maybe not, but it makes me think about that.
It's, it's in that discussion, yeah.
New villages have to go on the harbor.
Yeah.
Now they don't have any old buildings anymore. Everything that's theirs is theirs.
I guess it was more running a business.
Yeah, I've got a loss.
Or could we reject that change and maybe just make a comment to see if it's, if that's contained somewhere?
What's going on?
It's been changed for quite a while. I don't know when it happened.
Right, oh, you mean the strike through?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, so, yeah. Yeah, I'll have to sort it out.
Is that looking at new structures or existing structures that might be repurposed?
This is existing structures, use of farm structures.
Did it?
Yeah, well, it's allow use of farm structures.
Maybe you should say existing structures.
Yeah, I think it needs to.
Well, our zoning, I think this may be, I mean, we've, we've, yeah, it may be that it was in response to the question, what have we done? We have already amended the zoning regulations to give existing farm structures a range of activities that you can't do elsewhere in the zone, in the rural district. Or anywhere there's an existing farm structure that was existing as of a certain date. So it may have been that it was, get rid of it because we've done this. We have amended the zoning regs so that they allow people who have those existing farm structures to use them for these economically beneficial uses. And they can do things in those structures that you can't do in a new structure. That may be what it is. Is that it was, which of these things could we cut because we've done them? The zoning regs were in fact amended to allow this.
So for argument's sake and getting into the sense of place and quality places and that sort of thing, let's say somebody has a big chunk of land in the rural area and they want to have a sugar shack or a small equipment repair business.
Well, sugar shack is not going to be regulated.
Or, okay, I'm just looking at the examples.
Yeah, so you can do, for example, car repair in an existing farm building, but you can't, in the rural district, but you can't go and build a new building and, and set up a, a, a auto repair business. That's just, as the zoning regs are written right now, the opportunity was being created for owners of these farm buildings that if they don't have a use, they're going to fall down. So give them additional opportunities for use. But don't, the idea wasn't to encourage car repair businesses throughout the rural district in Shelburne.
Right.
It's a way of preserving an existing structure.
Right, it's to give those farm businesses greater opportunity for uses so that they will remain. But not open it up so that the, you will, you know, there are, there's at least one property owner that I'm aware of who's concerned about a neighbor who has a very, very large garage and repair vehicles is on a commercial basis. And our zoning regs don't encourage that, that don't allow it, I should say. They could do it in an existing farm building because the community's made this assessment that it's worth it because we want to keep those farm buildings. But they're not, the community's not trying to encourage car repair businesses in the rural district.
If that is the intent, then we should definitely have the word existing.
Well, it was, it was struck because it's been done.
Pull it out. Because it's not.
That's, that's the answer to the question.
That makes sense to me.
Because that's already in place, got it. All right. Any other comments in the recommended actions here?
One on future, somewhere down on three. It doesn't really say anything about, um, when there's development creating connections between wildlife and conservation areas. It sort of addresses.
Talking here, this I know is.
I know it's in another section, but this is a rural area.
About conservation?
And it does sort of dance around it, but it never really says that, that that should be a goal. I see. The encouraging connections between wildlife areas.
So this gets into continuity of the plan. Because we, we definitely hit this in the natural resources section. Cause we, we definitely hit this in the natural resources section in multiple sections.
Yeah. I'm just wondering if we shouldn't move it into here somewhere.
It mentions it in eight, right, the grant funding about wildlife corridors, was that the only place we mentioned?
It doesn't say anything though about what we're gonna do with it and...
No, I'm saying, is that the only place it's mentioned, is around grant funding?
I think so.
Well, what, I mean, did you wanna just continue that and add here as part of development?
It says here, number eight, consider pursuing grant funding to prepare a formal ecological assessment of important wildlife corridors. And maybe it should say something about incorporating, uh, that into new development.
Should just add a sentence saying in...
Or something to that effect.
Incorporate these...
When someone's developing a large parcel of land, or a parcel of land that has a buffer or something that... Or maybe they're between two areas, they allow some sort of easement.
Well, then we should maybe... I mean, I'd say get rid of consider pursue grant funding and then use these assessments as part of our review process or something along those lines.
Could you add something to number, um, where it says, right after amend the first bullet on page thirty-one? Amend the town subdivision regulations. The first bullet talks about maps, could you just add something that says, and use those maps to ensure, or something like...
On my page thirty-one.
That corridors are not broken.
I see it as thirty-two in mine.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's actually, it's thirty-two, it's here's what she's talking about.
Update the wildlife habitat and associated areas map informations.
Right.
So Dick, what's the core idea that you're...
Well, the idea is continuing, continuing to connect these wildlife corridors. So where they, um, we had a meeting about this at one point. And if there are, there's a block of forest, a couple of blocks of forest, and there's a piece of land in the middle being developed, trying to obtain a, some sort of easement between the two to allow it to grow up and encourage movement, wildlife.
Yeah, and there was, Sean had shown us areas in town where, you know, it was pretty sus... There were like a couple of key access points where if that piece of forest goes, it really breaks some of the connectivity. So I think...
So, yeah, and...
Figuring out some wording there would make sense per the, the idea of the map so that either sub-bullet or part of that saying, you know, the, the, the critical connect, connect, connecting pieces identified in those maps.
This is the area.
Be preserved or shall, whichever word we're using.
But it's gonna take a change to the zoning regs or the subdivision regs to actually do this, I mean...
Encourage doing it somewhere.
Well, isn't that in this already? Um, on the last bullet point of number two? Consider developing a wildlife habitat overlay district in the rural zone that protects core forest patches and their connectivity with other patches. It's here, it's here.
So that's where it is. I did zip.
Check.
Just catch.
So that's good?
Alright.
Unless that part that you brought up, Andrew.
No, I think it's all part of the same bullet flow, so it's fine there.
So I, I think then on ten, there was something, at least in the last one, that said to import wording from the open space plan, which is still there.
Yeah.
I don't know if we do a, uh...
Oh, yes, um, that wasn't...
Wasn't that what, no, that, that was in the earlier part where I submitted some language that you had asked me to at the last meeting. But it was in the part that was before number six where we started tonight.
Oh, so, so that wording we have?
I haven't mentioned. I can tell you where it was.
Yeah, um, this goes back a while.
Some of it was in land use in the very first paragraph. And then there was some language on what was the top of page eight, um, where the language was just Gordon, he said. So I wrote a whole new paragraph there. That was about primary and secondary views. So I think it may have been in the very first paragraph of land use.
So it's there?
I guess the idea is that if there are any recommended actions that are in the open space plan that the natural resources committee or others feel need to be brought into the town plan, this is the time to do it, and if they, if they've already been incorporated, then...
I think, yeah, then this, this probably doesn't need to be there, and I know that the natural resources section is pretty thorough in a lot of those references as well.
I think we do it in the natural resources section.
And this could certainly get into a debate of where things need to be cause of course it makes sense to have some of this stuff in the rural section of the land use development. But I, I don't know if we wait until we start seeing the, the final document and then maybe do a pass there, not disrupt, not being too disruptive. Yeah. Cause I mean, we're just frankly out of runway.
To be sure that it's addressed somewhere.
Well, I mean, I think the issue is that things are dealt, they're addressed in multiple places.
Right, yeah, I think if anything, we're...
Gonna take out...
I, yeah, and I'm not sure if somebody had something specific in mind around that, but I know that there's lots of references to things in the open space plan elsewhere.
So Dick's comment about eight, which it sounded like it was to go beyond using grant for, uh, grant sources to do these ecological assessments, but to actually apply them, you're satisfied, I think, because that kind of language is found in that...
Doesn't quite cover it, but it does cover what I was talking about to a degree.
With the wildlife habitat overlay?
Right, there's still nothing that encourages expanding the wildlife, those little corridors. It talks about preserving what's there. But it doesn't...
Well, to protect core forest patches and their connectivity with other patches.
Protects what's there, but it doesn't encourage connecting them.
But if they're already there, then they're connected.
And connectivity.
You're not talking about knocking buildings down in order to create...
No, no, I'm talking about when you do, you got a couple of large forest areas and there's a, a wide area between them and you're developing to put a fifteen or twenty foot buffer in there and have some growth in it.
It, it says, and their connectivity.
Yeah, it does.
Just allow connectivity.
I think it says what you're asking for.
Yeah, I think so too.
And their connectivity.
Checks.
To other patches.
And their connectivity with other patches, yeah, but it protects.
And it's not saying to protect just what's there, it's saying to protect core forest patches, which, I mean, unless there's a way to just create core forest patches.
Well, you can have a core forest patch in the middle of the meadow. And animals don't necessarily...
Right.
Core is not gonna be in the middle of a meadow, cause...
But even if it is, protect that and connect it with other patches. So I think that, what I'm hearing you say, I think is...
Cacates connectivity word in my brain tonight.
Connectivity.
Yeah, connectivity.
Where it's been eliminated.
Want a wildlife trail, real wildlife trail.
But if it's, if it's already there, is open, open land and, and nobody's put a building there yet, then you, you're not creating it by not putting any more buildings there.
Development goes in it.
But how about this, Dick, if you just say, instead of protects, you say in the rural zone that protects and improves core forest patches and...
That does it.
Yeah.
Cool.
That does it.
Sure.
Making progress. Alright, so then that should take us into the land use summary section.
Yeah, I agree with...
Should we talk about noise for a while?
Your comment about the, there's a little redundancy there.
Oh, I had another one?
Yeah.
On which one?
I think it was you, yeah. Isn't this covered in the, this village center portion, sort of?
Oh, right before the...
Right before noise. It just seems...
It is. Yeah, I think this is almost, yeah, it's the same wording. I don't know that we wanna compare the two right now, but I mean, just reading this, it definitely is echoed in the beginning of this entire section, getting into the DVC and village neighborhood.
Yeah, it, if it's above, it doesn't need to be here, and I'm wondering if this was another case where it didn't get...
Yeah, this might've just been a, an effect of, an artifact of the editing process.
Should get it out.
And then, so, policy on noise.
And this is a existing piece of text?
The policy on noise?
Yeah.
I believe so.
The policy on noise has a weird history. It was, it was added as a way to try to do something about wind turbines, and one particular one. I don't think we've had one since.
Didn't we have four or five pages at one time?
Not on noise, but, um...
What was the one we had to, we dropped in the end?
I mean, I think there was, there was some thought given to having a noise ordinance, and the police, former police chief was not a fan of the noise ordinance, and so it ended up, this kind of language ended up being in the town plan. And again, it's really aimed at devices that are not subject to our review, they're subject to public service board. And now we don't even call it the public service board, but, um, it was, it was developed by the town's lawyers, basically. Because it was written in the way they felt would give the town more standing. But we're doing all this stuff on energy. Nah, just, it seems kinda dated.
It does to me too.
Does it cover railroad?
It doesn't cover railroads.
Right, I mean, that's where, to eliminate it seems bizarre, given the current circumstances with the salt cars and the complaints.
Is it working for you, Steve? Trains.
And then there are complaints about concerts.
Salt cars or not.
Right.
Well, that's what I, that was the first thing I thought of, was trying to read where, cause it covers everything, but... I'm curious if this is what forces Shelburne Museum concerts to end by a certain time or something.
Well, but the, the Shelburne Museum concerts don't go to the public service board. So we don't, we don't need the second half of this, or the last third of it, to deal with things like the concert.
No, it just seems odd that it's stuck as part of future land use.
Uh, that has to do with stuff in the section two forty-eight process. That's why it was there, is there.
Is it because reducing noise in the rural district?
It's, no, it has to, it has to do with the language in title three that is what the public service board axander.
That's, is that with the Merkwood thing?
Yeah, well, the Merkwood decision, um... I'm rusty on this, but it, it established a benchmark for municipalities to have a review. I'm not even sure if the, the Merkwood standard is still the standard because the public service board has gotten much more strict when it comes to noise and wind turbines. So it could, it could be just irrelevant.
So should we just make a comment to review this, maybe?
I mean, I think that you could consider ending it after um, or similar devices. Or maybe even the sentence before, noise shall be deemed unreasonable when it exceeds what is usual and customary in the rural residential and conservation districts and disturbs and hurts or endangers the peace of health.
Well, it seems like, you know, to, to say that it's regarding windmills and wind turbines.
Yeah, I mean, it could...
But not, you know, other things that make huge amounts of noise. Maybe we oughta just strike the part that says and may include without limitation, but will have or similar devices.
Right. I mean, you could, right, you could, you could delete what I've got highlighted and end it with a period after community.
That would work for me if we're addressing Merkwood and else, elsewhere, which I believe we did in whatever the zoning update we did around that.
That works for me.
So take it out?
Yeah. So that brings us to natural resources?
For next meeting or what?
Coming, Jacks? I know.
Maybe you could highlight what's, what's new and improved.
Yeah, can we, can we do that? Well, I... I, I'm just worried that, well, yeah, we, we certainly could, I mean, there's... This isn't the entire section, right? Or is it?
Yeah, I think it is.
Yeah, I mean, there are...
Oh, that's good, it feels smaller than it was originally.
Well, it's, I was given a Word file, and that's what I used to print, but I did also put it, convert it into Google Docs, and I don't... Yeah, it wasn't edited since then.
Yeah, so we still have the seven objectives. Yeah, did you want to, uh, I, I'm, I'm good either way. I mean, if we're okay with a little extra time, I'd, I'd love to get through it, I don't know that we're gonna do that.
Rather than, do you think there's a lot of discussion?
Gail, do you think there's a lot of discussion in this?
Gail?
I'm sorry?
Do, do you think we'll have some discussion on this, or will we be just breezing through it?
I would like to think that you would love it.
Yeah, if we just wanna skip through to some comments, unless you have, if there were particular areas that you might want some clarity or input from the commission?
Well, I'll try to highlight what's in here. I, I think Susan did some work putting in and editing comments from the last time we were presenting to you. Uh, and then a couple of things that we've done since that. We did a little reorganizing, so within objective one, which, again, noting is our priority, recommended actions, and only hit these first before we get through two and two to seven. We've shifted some of the text around a little bit. Uh, the intention in the overall organization was to kinda reflect the same order of topics as is in the open space plan. So shifted some topics in objective one to try to reflect that. Uh, I just noticed that, uh, one thing we did do when we moved some items from one point four previously to what is now one point two, cause that's focusing on water. One point four in the open space plan deals with agriculture, so we added in one brief comment to create a new one point four. But I'm noticing now that actually one point seven addresses agriculture. So our current one point four, which is redundant from, um, four point, or five point, whatever. We could, we could strike that. So we did some reorganizing in, in that regard. I don't think we made massive changes within, uh, objective one. I don't think we made massive changes within Objective One. In Objective Two, we've added text in the description of the objective.
So can I just stop? And is there a consensus to remove that 1.4? Are we gonna do that? Or how, how do we want to execute? Because I think that as far as the edits, I've got the original Word version. I think it's better to use that than the one that was uploaded to Google Docs, because there are some formatting issues, but if that's how you want to proceed.
And make the 1.7 a new 1.4.
Uh, well, you've got 1.4 if it's, if it's, if this one's.
That's redundant to later on in the.
So take it out.
Yeah.
Okay, and so for some reason, the numbering isn't coming through here either, but.
But that's okay. I mean, take, take 1.7 and move that up to 1.4.
Oh, oh, gotcha.
Uh, and then that'll keep it aligned with how the open space plan is laid out.
Right.
Okay.
So Objective Two, Dean had given us some input that we need language to cover floodplain. So we've copied and pasted from text that he sent us, the second and third sentence into the Objective Two. And then at the end of the second section, starting 2.8, I'm also copying and pasting from Dean's language. A teeny tiny modification in there from what you sent us, Dean, I don't know if you want to double check on that. It's pretty much essentially what you sent us.
All right.
And.
Well, I do have one, one comment. The, so as far as and, and I think it's fine to be duplicative in this case, but two and three just seem to have a lot of overlap.
Well, three is supposed to be more wildlife oriented than two is specifically water resources oriented.
Okay, so, but Objective Two refers to aquatic and terrestrial natural resources? And three is natural communities, wildlife and habitat corridors? I, I, I get that they can be, that they are different, it just yeah, if there's a sufficient difference, that's done fine with that. It just seems like we're talking about very similar things.
Yeah, like, I could see where we could change the first one, Subject Two, to, from aquatic and terrestrial natural resources to water quality. I'm not remembering exactly how it's titled in the open space plan right now, we could refer back to that, too.
So two really does just deal with water quality kind of stuff, as opposed to three?
Water quality and flood resilience types of things.
So it is a different thing than, than three?
Than?
So you could just change the, the title of it, the title of two to not include terrestrial stuff? But it's not just water, if you look at the subbullets.
Yeah, I think the, the flood resilience talks about the damage to the land as well as to the water. And so maybe terrestrial isn't the right word. But it's, but this is not about wildlife necessarily specifically, it's more about the land itself.
So I, so even just saying natural resources, which would be inclusive of both of those things, so then you would have two talks about natural resources, three talks about the natural communities, wildlife and habitat corridors, which gets more into the things to utilize the natural resources.
I'm not, I'm not hearing you. I'm sorry.
So, the idea.
Just cut aquatic and terrestrial.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that two really talks about natural resources, and then three talks about wildlife and corridors?
Sure.
Or does that confuse anything more, or is that?
That sounds good to me.
Could I suggest an edit on a section, part of Objective One?
Yeah.
1.61, or no, sorry, 1.62. I would just suggest splitting that into two different, those seem like two wildly different suggestions, so I would just add make discourage outdoor domestic cats, a, a 1.63.
That's a good call out.
That's a good change.
Yeah, and while we're there, I think, doesn't the?
Where did that go?
Oh, wait.
Can I make a 1.64, so don't have to renumber?
Yeah, 1.63 is, is pretty new.
Yeah, and don't, but don't we have that?
Yeah.
Well, let's not delete the cat thing.
Right, I think.
There we go.
Yeah. So that would be then 1.64?
Yep.
But it, so once.
I think you have some of that a little bit in, in the the develop, the new development area and other, but not in the.
Well, we had a whole lighting requirement. I mean, this is in our bylaws today. I don't know that it specifically says dark skies, but we, we do have the.
I don't know that it's in our bylaws, because with quiniesca, for instance, and with some other development proposals, we have specifically asked for some of that, and the development review board has not paid attention to it, because it wasn't specific enough, doesn't it?
That was, that was one of the first things that we were getting into when I joined.
It's not a dark skies ordinance per se, but the lighting regulations.
But lighting facing down and low lumens and all that stuff, unless that was specifically in the village?
No.
But it, yeah, it was everywhere, right?
Yeah, I think it was everywhere.
And there are lighting districts that have additional restrictions along the lake?
Same with your, your building, too.
Yeah, we, it's all townward facing.
It was in the, it was in the zoning regulations, somebody took it out.
So you're, you're suggesting it because you've had an experience where the DRB didn't require quiniesca?
Well, then they put, they put a lot of lights in that when we had suggested that they not be there. It's not a fully, I'm sorry, it's not a fully lit community. They limited the number of lights, but there were some, they did require that they be downward facing, I guess.
Well, I mean, I know that we have that lighting bylaw, or, because that, that was a huge discussion, and I was pretty sure that almost all of these things were covered under it. I don't know that that would preclude us from having it, having this in here. It's still something that can be referenced.
Yeah, I think is, question, was the issue concerns about impacts of lighting on wildlife? Because, you know, do you want to have language that says revisit lighting requirements to address concerns about lighting impact on wildlife? That's
That would be.
That's something different.
That would be applicable, yeah.
Yeah, I think that could be. That could be very appropriate.
If the lighting is already recorded by the regs to say that it be dark sky, whether it's called dark sky or not in the regs, then.
I think it still doesn't need to be here if it, if it's in there, because there's no differentiation between wildlife lighting and people lighting and car lighting. It's all, it's all lighting.
I think the, uh, the one aspect of the lighting restrictions in the zoning regs is that they don't, they don't really focus on what could happen to wildlife. There are these lighting zones that have different restrictions that have to do with color and to some lesser degree, intensity, but there isn't a section of the lighting regs that says something like reduce lighting impacts on wildlife areas or previously mapped, and that might have been where you were going with comments of the DRB. Hey, can you pull the lights out of here, because we think it's going to affect species X, Y, Z? There's nothing in the regs that would give the DRB the basis to do that. And you're saying consider putting something like that in. I'm not sure what the standards would be, but it's a, it's a deficiency, or it's something that the regs don't explicitly address. So that's what, I'm trying to get a handle. It's not, it's not downward facing lights, because that is, that is a requirement of the regs.
Where's the lighting, Gail? Is it just around the clubhouse, or is it?
No, this was on the other side with the.
The Snyder Project.
The Snyder property. And they, they did limit the lights there. Maybe I'm just conflating years and years of being before the whole development review board. So if you're sure that there is language in other parts of the plan that address that, then I would think that Dean's suggestion of shortening this perhaps, what do you think, Don? Shortening this perhaps to make a comment about taking into account the impact of lighting on wildlife would be sufficient.
I, I think replacing with that first section, uh, sentence that you put in there is good. I, I guess my question would be because we already have what's highlighted there effectively in our bylaws, is there a need to have it in the plan for any reason at all? And I don't, I guess that was my initial thought. Like, if we already have it, then we don't need to have it in the plan unless it's something that we feel really strongly just needs to be called out separately as a reinforcing thing.
Did the lights that went in to replace the lights that were taken out in the school street neighborhood comply with the downward facing
Yeah.
kinds of?
What if we just left, uh, had a dark skies ordinance and period and dropped the rest of it?
Because I think we have one.
Yeah, I just don't think it's.
We have a dark skies ordinance?
It's not called dark skies in our lighting stuff. And I, I don't know that, well, to be honest, I'm not sure exactly what that means. I mean, there's dark, dark sky zones and stuff where there's no lights, but we're not going that far. So, I mean, to me, I think it's more, there was a lot of debate around the whole lighting ordinance.
There is a lot of definition in the lighting about how far light can go, it can't go onto another property, so we probably write.
Yeah, but I think it's also, um, it's got to have full cutoff. Typically, dark skies full cutoff with, without anything going above the horizontal plane.
Yeah, I mean, our.
From the light fixture.
Our lighting regs could be, could be updated and modern, modernized, certainly, because the types of lights that people use, LED as an example, are much more prevalent now than when that was first written. So, I mean, it stands to be updated, but it's not, the deficiency isn't that it doesn't require full cutoff, because it does. And it does prevent someone from shooting lights straight up into the sky.
But they're, just thinking about it now, maybe there is something that, that, that doesn't, isn't catching up to the, to the LEDs like you're saying, that I think there's a, something that says for any bulb above a certain number of watts.
It uses lumen equivalents, and it uses foot candles. I mean, foot candles would still apply, but the lumen equivalences is dated.
Well, so do, to that point, do we want to have another point that just says can investigate or revisit the, well, investigate adding a dark skies ordinance or something and just leave it at that? And then future discussion?
And or modernize current lighting ordinances?
Yeah, keep up with the development of technology or.
But, but are you folks confident?
But this is in natural resources.
Are you confident that, that the dark sty, dark skies organization, which is why there, I mean, there's an organization that Dark Skies US or whatever, are you confident that their model regulations address wildlife adequately?
No, I mean, I don't, I don't know, I'm not familiar enough with them.
I, I would suggest that being part of, well, for discussion, that this being the natural resources section, that that first sentence is great, and the rest of it
Yeah, agreed.
probably shouldn't be in this section, and I, and we do have ordinances that address this, so even just, we, at any point, anybody could say, let's revisit lighting.
Right, I agree too.
I didn't even know that there was a dark skies organization, but maybe we could put something in there or do some research on that just to ensure that we are meeting the standards that are really supportive of wildlife.
My association with dark skies is that there's a handful of national parks and other areas where there's zero light in the whole surrounding area, which we would not be making Shelburne that. I, I don't know if they have, do they have suggested?
International Dark Sky Association talks about lighting ordinances, how to find out if your town has it, how to make sure it's up to date, how to make sure it's, so.
Then again, I, I, it could still be applicable to natural resources if we just want to say investigate adding a, or modifying our lighting ordinances to.
Conform with best practices of dark skies.
That is a good way to phrase it.
So as part of the same language or a separate one, uh, so we want to say something about update lighting requirements in the zoning regulations?
I, I think revisiting for wildlife, that's, that's one thing, and a, a second point, if you're, I mean, I could see it argued that lighting on the whole can impact natural resources in various ways, so just have a separate.
You could say something like up, update them to conform with dark skies best practices or something like that.
Well, again, the dark skies, we don't know that that relates to wildlife. I think just that first sentence is all we need.
Yeah, I mean.
Revisit the lighting regulations to address the impact on wildlife, because it's already.
Yeah.
We, we can certainly go and leverage dark skies.
I mean, it's not just wildlife, because I think it also affects botanical growth. And I'm not a scientist, so I can't vouch for that, but I believe it does.
And gets into our quality of life issue on, on space plan two.
Right. Well, which was, was a lot of the discussion around the lighting regs that we redid two years ago.
So it's okay to have it address wildlife, but you also now want to bring in botanical impacts, or?
Just, I, I think leaving that first sentence is good. I, just get rid of wildlife and say natural resources if we want, that encou, that covers everything. And then the rest of that can go away.
Change it to natural resources?
Agreed.
Going ones?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Agreement through attrition.
And we'll leave it at that.
Brain cells are starting to just throw in the towel. All right.
Okay, another new point. There's been a lot of talk about stormwater issues, I, I, I mean, the, I'm sorry, about the sewer area of the town. We've added in 2.5.1 to highlight septic areas, which likely in rural, rural zone may start to fail. Well, at some point, we may not have the oversight on, on that at this time, which can help to maintain our water quality and so forth.
So the one thing I need to say about that's item two is that the state has jurisdiction over wastewater systems. So for the town to establish regulations, we would have to take on the entire septic program. There are two, two towns in Vermont that.
Like a challenge.
Yeah, two, two towns in Vermont. Yeah, entire state, two towns do it. So there is an administrative burden, but just, it's not as simple as going to the select board with a proposal to adopt an ordinance that would supplement all the others. I'm not sure that we would have any jurisdiction over the, over this unless we were to go to the state and ask to have the responsibility for wastewater delegated.
But if someone reports a septic failure, they have to be addressed by the state.
So, I mean, the state handles the permitting, and if there's surfacing and there's a health impact, well, the health officer can, can go out as well. But that, this isn't, yeah, the town health officer, but this is saying, come up with a set of regulations.
Right. Right, and we don't really need them. What we need to do is just find where there are failures and the state will enforce upgrades.
But if the town's going to have somebody that goes out searching for failed wastewater systems, that's.
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying if we don't need this because that's, if we find a system failing, then we just report it to the state.
Right. But most likely the homeowner would find it and.
They don't know.
Or neighbors.
But the neighbors will probably pick up.
So instead of Shelburne will, should the recommended action be encourage programs that? And then if we're not establishing regulations based on it, remove number two?
Yeah.
Do we actually have that monitoring data?
No, no one's, as far as I know, no one is going out and comprehensively collecting information about, no one's sampling, well, that would be a task.
So unless we're encouraging the town to hire a wastewater person, then I don't think we should have this item in here at all because it really is a state thing and without enforcement, it's just empty words.
But you know what, instead of encourage, support. And the reason being is that if there are programs that are available to towns, then that is something that I would be for supporting and encouraging.
Repairs.
Those things being done in the town, like help to clear paths for, like if there was an organization that was saying, hey, we're doing well monitoring or septic tank monitoring or whatever it is, and would you be interested? This is the kind of thing that would say, yes, we as a town should be interested, but we wouldn't have, like number two, we wouldn't be able to do based on what Dean was indicating.
Nor probably 2.7 either, right? 2.7, we have someone who's gonna.
But we could still, well, that's true.
So, I mean, the water quality, water quality monitoring is being done by groups like Lewis Creek. It's not someone on staff that does it. The natural resources committee has a role in working with Lewis Creek.
I wonder if, when a house transfers and they do septic tests, do the people that are doing the tests have to report to the state?
Yeah, I think they do.
I think so.
So there is a certain amount of testing going on.
Yeah.
It wasn't something that we were aware of, but we thought it was important.
We've been, just I guess I have a question on 2.7, also the review water quality monitoring data. Which data from what organization?
I believe this is a comment Susan was working on, I don't know if she's fleshed it out. I'm sure she would point to Lewis Creek data for one.
Right, I mean, there's specificity might help only given that, you know, we do have some impaired or almost impaired waterways, you know, so if we could, just might be helpful.
Yeah, places like the Winnebago Valley Park District does some of that and Lewis Creek certainly does. And we specified, that's what LCA refers to.
Dean just wrote that in.
Oh, okay.
Sneaky. So we have something like that.
Can you write that out?
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah, I just was listening to get. It's getting late.
It is, I think we need to target wrapping this up here.
Can't speak, can't type.
So since we.
And I think we might want to, while we're already collaborating with Lewis Creek and helping to support them financially, but they have to come to us every year. It's not something that's a given, so I wouldn't want to remove that. Perhaps in addition to reviewing it, we might want to say and support the development of.
That's 2.5.1.
Right, supporting programs that do that.
That's not septic, that's more like.
Well, but we could add it in there, right? Support programs that monitor the long distance soil, groundwater.
And it's not groundwater, it's invasives and pollution and phosphorus in the water supply.
No, but I think that might be the place to.
It could be.
Gail, how big is that organization?
Specify.
How big is that organization beyond Marty?
Oh, it has Marty right now and it has a new director. Marty is sort of stepped back from that. And then it has many, many volunteers, but it does not have a lot of employees.
But a full board of directors too.
A full board of directors and volunteers and then they have a budget that allows them to collect and disseminate a lot of the data that they have.
So is it the idea adding to 2.5.1, something like support programs that, and number three, local water quality?
Monitor water quality.
In local streams and.
In local streams and the lake, streams of bays, whatever.
Are they, are they doing a lot of lake stuff?
Well, at the.
You just say local waterways and keep it general.
You wanted to say and the lake.
Yeah. I mean, the outlets to the lake.
Oops. Wait a second, what happened here?
Not just monitoring data, but also unless you would consider monitoring invasive removal.
So we're thinking of taking this idea of supporting groups like LCA, adding it to this existing one. So support programs that monitor water quality and local streams and address invasives? Is that the piece that it's missing? Support a program that monitors water quality in local streams and Lake Champlain? Is it a fourth?
And control of invasive species.
Which could be its own point. So if you got rid of two, make number three two, and then what you have as four could be three.
Just a formatting thing and this goes back to high school, so it may be out of date. If you don't have a 0.1 and a 0.2 or a 0.3, you don't have a 0.1, right?
Right.
Well, we have a 2.5 up there.
Right, but if there's no 2.52, then you don't.
Right, unless we make those others.
It's still, it's a sub bullet. Yeah, I mean, I.
Like 2.6 doesn't have a 2.6.1.
The military, this is the military system and it holds in the military system to have this numbering, but it's not, it's not grammar.
Yeah, and I would just say whatever it is we do, we just need to be consistent because otherwise you just have, what, a bullet?
Well, it just becomes part of 2.5.
Could be A, B, and C.
Part of 2.5.
It's 2.6.
It's not a separate thing.
Before we get to that, let's get the.
Because I just think that that would be a formatting thing. If you want to add a comment on there, like highlight 2.51 or whatever and just say, consider formatting, reformatting into the above point or something. John Public.
Yeah.
John Public?
Yeah, so then one, two, two is monitoring local streams and three would be monitoring invasive species.
And by support, it was a question of whether the select board would actually designate funds each year. So I think there are two meanings of support and I don't know if we need to be more specific. There's support, in other words, give them moral support, and then there's give them financial support.
Right, and we might want to keep that vague.
So we're not going to, we're not going to make specific mention of dollars. I was just wondering about number three because they do more than monitor invasive species, they're actually actively managing, so.
Or monitor and manage?
Manage is good.
Or, yeah.
Are we getting closer?
I finally remembered where we did some work following pushes from Kate on tightening up the overall design process and that's in, back in 1.3. And I'd also flagged, there are new map references here. This is coming from Sean, I think he's talking now about four different kinds of maps that get from very specific, these are regulatory areas to avoid on up to more generalized kinds of mapping. But then Kate was wanting us to initiate kind of a top down, let's look at the big picture first and then come down and finally end up at the site process. Tried to put some of that thinking particularly in this one spot here.
Yeah, well, my comment on 1.3 was that it was a gigantic sentence.
You've been reading Faulkner.
Yeah.
So you could put a period after open space plan, third sentence down.
Right.
Well, can we, can we, if we, this is really about making it readable and not changing the substance, can we make it as a comment?
Yeah, let's make a comment to just tighten that. Because we really need the hard stop here.
And punctuation.
A few minutes, yeah.
I think the last area to highlight, objective seven, we begin talking about our open space conservation fund and starting to relabel it, conservation fund, but it ends up being a bit of a catchall for other thoughts as well. So maybe as you read through the whole sections, objective seven, particularly 7.9 is a new section. That's about all I'm remembering.
Yeah, I think that there was a lot in the agricultural resources that was new, not in the previous plan. And I don't know if we've reviewed any of that with you before.
That's objective four.
But if you want to go first to nine because Don mentioned that.
Yeah, on that one, I just had the double comments between maintenance and stormwater and.
Yeah.
And a question about use of the word contiguity, which may be completely legit, it just kind of caught me when I was reading it.
And also 7.9 at the beginning, ensure that the town's department's own practice, the town department's own practices model and reflect the principles of natural resource protection. That means that the town should undertake using more responsible ways of managing, whether it's whales or drainage ditches or the chemicals that they use to maintain the gardens around town. We're asking that the town actually undertake doing that itself. Same thing with being ecologically responsible in power use and things like that.
That sounds like a good addition.
So, set the word you're talking about.
Yeah.
Kind of bouncing around in this section, there was, there was something that you started at the very beginning, it sounded like it was agreement, some redundancy or something with stormwater or some, there was a first edit that I missed.
I think it had to do with the double commas.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The double commas.
That you fixed.
Okay.
Yeah, and then the second one was in 7.91, just the word contiguity jumped out at me, but it's not underlined, so at least word thinks it's a word.
Yeah.
It's the right word.
Perfect. I was just looking for somebody to say yes.
7.9.3 I doubt it should be planned mowing schedule.
Yeah, that's true. So when you're talking about mowing schedules, are you talking about what areas, like the by the post office?
The 80 acres.
Meadows.
What's that last one mean? Is it create a budget or create?
Create and budget.
Or just budget to upgrade?
Updated stormwater and wastewater structures, they're doing that already.
Create.
That's part of stormwater.
Create doesn't work for me there.
Agreed. I don't know, they even need 7.9 for. Because the town is already budgeting on an annual basis to upgrade all these systems.
Continue to?
They're going to, yeah.
Right, but I'm saying, should we just say continue to? Because I know that all of that is really important if it doesn't hurt to have in there.
Yeah, right.
I mean, are there particular stormwater structures that are giving the most concern? I mean, this is part, 7.9 is about the town taking care of its own business.
Right.
So is there a specific one that needs to be fixed that isn't?
Well, I think that it's an age system, an age system, and we've seen numerous accidents, such as the one that came around Harbor Road and that sort of thing. And so just going into a regular maintenance review of those kinds, of those systems on a regular basis and budgeting to have them funds to be able to be preemptive in repairs and updating, upgrading.
So now I'm understanding, yeah.
So to your point, if we just add the word continue to, or the words before that?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Since we're already doing it and it just reinforces.
Does everybody feel like this, the section seven is the right place to put 7.9 and even 7.8 or would it maybe be better off in objective six, which is about maintaining, protecting, enhancing Shelburne suburb quality of life, blah, blah, blah? Rather than relating to the open space fund or conservation?
Yeah, I do agree with that, so.
7.9 and 7.8 moving to 7.6?
Six.
Of six.
Management plans would be.
Moving under objective six.
The management plans would still be under.
7.8.
The open space fund, I think.
So just 7.9?
Yeah, I think 7.8 should, it's okay here.
So move 7.9 to section six, objective six.
So wait, we're only moving one of them now?
Yeah.
7.9?
Correct. Can just go as the last one, it'll be 6.4. And I think we need to call.
Is that?
Don, you added the conservation fund as opposed to the open space plan, but there was a recommendation that we change the name of the open space plan and it hasn't been done yet.
Hang on a second, so 7.9, yeah, so that would become 6.4.
Okay, that's it.
And what hasn't been done yet?
We had recommended within the context of the natural resources section, changing the name of the open space fund to the conservation fund, but it hasn't actually happened, although it looks like when you did the final edit, you changed it to conservation fund.
Yeah, well, it. That's 7.2 says to change the name.
And then we went ahead and changed it.
Oh, right. Yeah, so maybe just a comment around, in objective seven, the conservation fund?
Yep.
Just highlight that and say, just a comment to make it consistent with how it's referred to. And for tonight, can that end the? And for tonight, can that end the natural resources section?
It will never end it.
For tonight. And then I would recommend the public utilities and telecom, we move to next time.
Is is it fair to say that we won't mess with telecom if it's, I mean, are you?
I think, well, for telecom, I think that's fair to say.
Yeah, I don't really have any issues with.
I mean, my only comment was, right now it's listed as three goals, and maybe break it into objectives and recommended actions if if at all, but.
Okay, I mean, I just was looking for, if it was gonna be something we could do in five minutes. But if you want to leave that to the editor, I mean, I, we're in this position where, and we maybe are segueing. Maya has been getting copies of texts that I've provided to her for the finished sections, but my bad. I haven't run them through Andrew, and I probably should have, but I think that we can make sure that that happens with transportation. She had, oh, actually, I might have sent that one as well. But we can make sure that Andrew gets the chance to edit. This is sections that we want him to edit, and that could include things like what we were just talking about telecom. The thing that I wanted to do though, because this will be kind of the bright spot of the evening, is show you her latest progress document. I could just flash it through in like thirty seconds.
What's the best way to work with her on edits?
Well, so it may be to work with the document that I'm gonna show you right now.
That's what I said, I'd almost rather.
Yeah.
Do that.
I think that's what.
If that's shareable and editable.
Uh, it's a PDF, so you can mark it up.
Yeah.
But, um.
Thanks, thank you.
Thanks, Don, thanks, Gail.
Good night.
So I haven't had any conversations with her other than to say, you know, I've gone through it and I'm continuing to be impressed. But she has, whoops. She's got the cover, she's got this, I think, sort of an alternative cover or inside, just to give a contrast. Um, she's, she's taken a stab at a table of content with the sections as we've got them in the current plan. She needed to do something, and that's what she did. Um, she's got the prologue laid out, she's got the intro laid out, she's got the vision laid out. She's got historic and cultural resources laid out, and it's looking good. She's got places like this where she and I had a conversation about maps, and I just made some best guesses about how many maps I saw going in the document overall, and then assigning them to the different sections. We need to have a pretty extensive conversation about maps at the next meeting, but anyway, you'll see things like this.
And that would be a map of historical and.
Well.
Cultural resources?
Yeah, so, right, the question is, what would the map be? And I was talking with the historic preservation folks this morning, saying that a lot of town plans are putting in what we call the beers atlas maps or the wallings maps, because they're, they're kind of interesting. They show what Shalburn was like in eighteen fifty four or whatever, one is like. It could be a map like that, or it could be a map that shows the boundaries of the current national register historic district. So there are some options, and we can get into the details at the next meeting, but she's got placeholders.
Or it could be a, you know, potentially two things, right? Like a picture of town back in the day and kind of how that overlays now, where they sit today.
Yeah, and so I think as we, as you, as all of us look at this, we can size up some of her ideas that would be, oh, she's got a page for a map. Would it be best to have it as one map or maybe two maps side by side or something like that? I think there's the flexibility there. One thing you'll notice is that her format has got the recommended actions ending up on a different colored page.
That's great.
Um, and then she's got the images, she's got parks and rec laid out, she's got the different photos. And again, recommended actions on a page with a color, lots of little photos that she's incorporated.
And does each section kind of have a color palette?
Yeah.
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 Seems like, so like that blue stripe there.
Yep.
Then becomes the.
Yep, so it's got that color theme by section. Housing is one that she has, she's got placeholder graphics, she's got, again, the consistent theme, childcare, short section, you know, really great photos. Uh, energy, she's pulled in, and this is the first section where the text had tables. And I'd asked her, you know, how do you want to handle tables? And this is what she's come up with, so basically a, we're just giving the basic information with no formatting, not telling her how to format, and she's formatting it consistent with that section. So energy and recommended actions and generation. And then she has transportation, that's one of the last sections that she was given. It's a pretty long one, but you can see what she's doing.
She's making us look good.
I know, right?
It does make.
This is impressive.
It does make a difference, doesn't it?
Yeah.
I realize it's late, I'll email this out, I'll maybe compress the document a little bit, it's kind of big. And people can make comments.
Percentage of the project is she got down?
How much what?
What kind of percentage is she, half of it or?
Well, in terms of the number of chapters, she's probably halfway through, we could go back to the table of content, but we've got some major chapters like future land use, natural resources, transportation she hasn't laid out, those are, those are the biggies. But she seems to get them into this format pretty quickly.
Yeah, this looks really good.
Yeah.
So is this.
Done some cool things.
Absolutely. Does that count as updates?
Yep.
Sweet, any other updates?
Do you have any update on my visionary friend who I left?
He was gonna be here tonight, but he is not, so I'll send a follow up note. Yeah, I think, just being practical, I I think that we'll just need to evaluate, and I'd love to have his input, but if he can't be here, then can't be here. So any commissioner questions and comments? Other business?
I'll send you an email with just some references to these public service board announcements that the planning commission gets, and I won't lead you through them tonight.
Have you guys gotten decent number of submissions from your appeals?
I've had a few, very nice ones.
Yeah, I haven't had, I mean, I have a tone, but I'll go through. Cass is taking a lot of cute pics.
Well, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, just questions, comments. So I received an email from a resident, which I will bring up at the next agenda, with the next meeting, I just want to state that I received it from Sarah Nilson. She was concerned about the quality of the water in the holding pond at Quinnyaska.
Oh, I noticed that.
And so.
It's pretty green.
Yeah, so I just wanted to mention that that has come to my attention or has been brought to my attention.
I think there used to be a fountain in there, didn't there?
And so we can talk about that at another meeting, but.
Then. There was a water spout there.
I thought there was some circulation of some kind.
This year.
Both of them, that you can see from the street there, but the one she's probably worried about is the one that I think actually flows through where I live, Boulder Hill, that one's got green, I mean, the whole surface of the water is green.
So, and, yeah, we can keep talking about that as well after a motion.
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 A second.
All right.